I will call the meeting to order at six thirty. Please stand up for pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance
to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under indivi- with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Pierce?
Mr. Pierce?
Mr. Mason?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Bluthard?
Here.
Mr. Furman?
Here.
Mr. Remini?
Here.
Mayor Gerder?
Presence. First item on the agenda is approval of the March ninth, twenty twenty-two committee of the whole meeting minutes as presented. Motion trustee Anniac, second trustee Bluthard. Roll call please.
Pierce?
I would say.
You second?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Bluthard?
Yes.
Furman?
Yes.
Remini?
Yes.
Five voting yes, one abstaining's minutes are approved. First item on the agenda is a mayoral report. We have a full room here for, it's been a while since we had a meeting, so we have some acknowledgements to make. The first group that we would like to acknowledge is the Anniac County High School cheerleaders. If you're here, stand up. Alright. So.
Yeah.
I'm, I believe, I gotta get to the printout here, I believe, I think you took third place in the state competition, is that correct? Okay, so, again, the highlights are the ECH RC cheerleaders, that's a young team, made up of mostly freshmen and sophomores, only three juniors and one senior. I'm assuming most of you were probably part of the Anniac Vikings at some point too, so that's Peter program. Only one person on the team ever performed at IHSA due to the cancellations of COVID. It's a, the high school cheerleading team was a strong team all season long, never placing below third place in any competition. On day one of state, they were decent, and then the second day of state, they made a comeback from ninth place, and all the way to third place. So, this is the fourth trophy in the last five years for the Marcy cheerleading, so, again, we want to congratulate you and thank you for coming here to our meeting to be acknowledged, so, thank you very much. If you got first place, you actually get a parade, so, that's an issue for that next time, okay? Thank you. Yeah, if you guys want to take a picture or whatever you'd like to do, we can do that now, and then you guys can sit and listen to the whole meeting.
Are you gonna be in the picture, you're on?
Yeah, I guess everybody's gonna be in the picture. You're not gonna get like a pyramid or anything?
It didn't recognize it, I had to email it to you. You won't recognize it. I emailed it to you.
The PowerPoint?
Yeah. You won't recognize that.
Well, I just got to say, come up and then so we can acknowledge a couple of your peers that have also acknowledged. Alright, the next group of acknowledgements relates to the Lakeland Predators wrestling state champions, there's probably three of them here. We have Grady Kowalki, I'm sorry, Abby Kowalki, Leela Carson, and there's some information here, so, Leela is third, stand up and come up here. She's got a meat face. Leela's in third grade, started wrestling for the Lakeland Predators when she was four, she's a two-time girl state champ and took second at Tulsa Nationals. Leela wants to follow the footsteps of her idols and wrestle at the University of Iowa Hawkeye's women's wrestling team. She would like to become a doctor when she's grown up. Abby, where's Abby? Raise your hands. Alright, Abby is a fourth grader at Hillcrest and has been wrestling since she was seven with the Lakeland Predators. She is the, this year's state championship with an incredibly bright future. Abby hopes one day to be a chicken farmer. Yes. Maybe more eggs, too. Next is Grady. Grady is a fourth grader at Hillcrest and has wrestled since he was six with the Lakeland Predators. This year, he took the difficult task of moving up an age group where he could have competed against kids as old as seventh grade and won the state championship in dominant fashion. Grady hopes one day to win gold at the Olympics. Alright, so we want to congratulate you. Alright, thank you, guys. Thanks for coming in. Next, we have the Anniac Queen portrait presentation, I believe, I saw the queens over here. We'd like to come up, we have Queen, Miss Anniac Rachel Halt, Junior Miss Anniac Abigail Flade, and Little Miss Anniac Audrey Rule, so thank you for coming out. Probably see these ladies quite often this summer, come to the concerts, I believe they spend a lot of time there on Thursday nights. Sure, sure. Alright, two more items on the acknowledgements. One is, we'd like to acknowledge, which is National Telecommunicators Week, April tenth through sixteenth, and this is for our dispatchers at CENTCOM, the nine-one-one center that communicates with our police and fire for your safety. And then lastly, on a sad note, I'd like to just do a brief moment of silence to acknowledge the passing of Dennis Voling, who served as a member of the fire department for more than fifty-five years and was a police chief for fourteen years. Fire chief? Oh my god, fire chief, I'm sorry, fire chief, my bad. And he was laid to rest last Friday, but this is our first meeting since that happened, so again, just a ten-second moment of silence, please. Thank you.
I could be, I can have a moment?
Sure.
I'm one of the city trustees that served with Dennis Voling. And I was in the fire department two years before I got bored, and so the Jackson Park, I went over to wrestle for a few years. Danny Voling, for the five years, people don't understand, when you heard that twenty-one hundred, it's going, oh, that was two in the morning. That was all kinds of like twenty, 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 twenty-five years, that's just on Voling. That's, you gotta understand, some of the people don't understand, ten feet of snow during the early seventies, he was there. He was in house fires, these guys went in, unfortunately, these guys went in, didn't know an air pass. Ice rescue calls, Danny Voling was always there. I can't remember, very rarely did you hear twenty-one oh two, twenty-one oh one, I always heard twenty-one hundred, but Danny was chief. Dedicated man. You ask his kids, why don't you become a member of the fire department, because Danny was never around, around. He spent his dedication to this town and to the fire department. He was a dedicated man, you know, he's got one of his relatives sitting back there, who's also a rescue squad fire, Mike Voling. Great guy, I was blessed to know Danny Voling.
Well, thank, thank you, those words. So, yeah, I, I learned a lot about Danny in the last couple of weeks and how much he had to get back out of this town and the legacy that he left. Not only things he did, but family members and friends that still live here, so, I want to thank him again. And I want to thank you guys all for coming here, and you may have a break between the rain to, to leave and not have to sit through the rest of the meeting unless, unless you choose to. So, again, I thank you, we'll give you a couple of moments to, to exit if you, if you want to go. Thanks for coming in again. Alright. So. As we move through the committee of the whole meeting, we have two opportunities to address the board, once during the committee of the whole meeting, once during the regular board meeting. I will caution you that it appears that the committee of the whole meeting will be a longer part of the meeting, so if that changes your mind for when you'd like to address the board, if you are on Zoom, raise your virtual hand, and Jim Raynales knows if you're ready to speak. If not, is there anybody that wishes to address the board right now? Alright, then we'll move along to the regular business. The first item on the agenda is discussion regarding the Anniac Theater. It's going to be led by staff Michael Garrigan, potentially some questions through Zeta, and then we have Linda and Tim Downey to present the remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. This matter comes before you again for the village board for consideration of future discussions about the future of Anniac Theater. As we've discussed over the past number of months, staff has been working with Mr. Downey for almost actually a year, based on his intent to proceed with the sale of the Anniac Theater, which has been a long institution in Anniac's actually business since nineteen twenties. We, Mr. Downey has been negotiating for his perspective sale of this historic theater to Ms. Monty, who's presently here. And what they are asking this evening is for consideration of a village financing, specifically as we discussed before at several board meetings. The proposed sales price is four hundred thousand dollars, and the applicant is seeking financing for approximately three hundred fifty thousand dollars of that purchase price. We've been working with some local banks, specifically State Bank of the Lakes, on a proposed potential loan with the village, and there will be a payback agreement with the applicant, we would get their support for this loan. The village would work with their village council to enter into a loan agreement with the applicant with a payback, subject to imposing the ticket tax. The ticket tax could generally pay back on this loan over a period of ten years. At the end of ten years, there's balloon payment, I think you have in your packet, an amortization table. So, there is an amortization table, and I know there was one trustee who had some questions about the profits and losses of this theater historically. You have in your packet a profit-loss table that was prepared by Mr. Downey last year prior to COVID. Obviously, COVID did change the general business plans of this business, but in view of the fact we're coming out of COVID, you, you had that profit-loss review. I try to provide a very brief summary in my staff report, just outlining some of the pros and cons of this proposal. Clearly, there's no question, the theater is a economic development engine in the village, it's perhaps draws more visitors, but perhaps than any other business in our town. It's been a long historic institution, as I said, it's been in business since nineteen twenties. So, that is one of the aspects that should be considered. We do have an applicant who has some creative ideals, I'll provide Ms. Monty an opportunity to walk the board through some of their different business plans and different concepts. As we discussed before, staff does have some concerns about if, in fact, unfortunately, if the applicant was not able to continue this business throughout the duration of the loan, the potential of the village owning a movie theater, and what is the long-term viability of the theater? And what does that mean for a municipality that owns a theater? So, those are some of the complicating factors that should be considered, in balance with, you know, potential of having a vacant theater. Adaptive, adaptive reuse of vacant theaters, movie theaters specifically, sometimes can be challenging. So, in this case, we have a purchaser who's interested in proceeding with a purchase. With that, I'll conclude my staff report. There is a proposed board evidence as part of a regular business in regards to with an affirmative motion for recommendation, but this is really for general discussion, and with that, I'll be more than happy to answer the questions that the board has. And Ms. Monty, the applicant, is actually here, answering the questions along with Mr. Downey, the parent owner. With that, I'll conclude my staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Garrigan. Why don't I go around the trustees so they can ask questions, I know the applicants are here. Some of they may have some of the questions, some of the answers may come from Zeta or, or Michael, so, I will start with trustee Pierce. If you have any questions?
I don't, I don't really have questions. I, I want to say a theater in a, in a town or a village is a very special thing. It's something, when I drive through towns, I notice when they're boarded up, and I notice when they're open. And Anniac has a very nice theater that's in very good, a very good fit to that, that area. And Mr. Downey has done wonders there, and so, I think the village should deeply appreciate that. I have grave concerns, though, about us financing a loan of this nature. I would be more than willing to impose a ticket tax or allow liquor sales at the theater to help improve things there, but I don't know about a, a, a village-based loan. So, I'm waiting to hear from the other trustees and Mr. Downey and Linda to see what, what they have to say.
Trustee Mason?
I get, I get it, so, I noticed we did a twenty-year with a ten-year payoff, so there's money at the end. Money, there's twenty-year payoff with money at the end, so the twenty-year amortization with the ten-year payoff, so it leaves eighty-eight thousand. We're under par for the interest rate as far as what you, what can be done today, as far as a commercial rate. About thirty basis points by the minimum. I'm looking at the, the revenue based off the theater, thirty thousand a year, forget about COVID, but isn't there apartment buildings up top?
No.
Who owns, who owns that top part?
That's, there's windows, it's a office up there. It used to be a apartment, a long time ago. He put a second theater in.
So, there was one away? So, it's about thirty thousand dollars net, net income?
Or COVID, thirty or forty. Not including spots.
Which is not in, in here. Talking to other places, you know, the other two places, and I know you're gonna want to do comedy night and other stuff in the competition. You've got two places doing it right next door, you've got the rivalry doing comedy night, you've got the live doing comedy night. I don't know what Station Fifty-One is gonna do when they, they try to compete against the same entertainment. So, I don't know, I don't like the amortization that at the end of ten years, we've got just about ninety thousand dollars still due to the village, doesn't make sense to me. So, this amortization, I don't, I just don't understand it, you can't get a payment, a balloon payment in ten years, what are we doing to ninety grand? Who owns, who owns over the same situation, or just kicking a can down the road?
You're talking about an asset that's
You're talking about an asset that's worth several hundred thousand dollars, that's what it is right now, bank won't give you financing. But you're, you're refinancing something less than a hundred thousand, so it's, it's a completely different financial dynamic then. But nobody knows what streaming is gonna be, they might just release movies to streaming, nobody knows what that loan is gonna be in ten years. Technology changes, but then you're all of a sudden assuming that the building is worthless at that point. Right? But you gotta be, you gotta have a fiduciary responsibility, why not pay it off in ten years and call the debt? It's, it, I'm not saying that Linda, it's Linda's decision that she wouldn't pay it off based on I don't like, I don't like the amortization, or, or we gotta, we gotta sit there in ten years, and whoever's sitting up here has to sit there and go, geez, we gotta figure this out again. But you, you wouldn't have to figure it out again. Eventually, you would. Well, I just like something clean, clean and done. You should logically think about it, that Linda owns the asset, and either she loses it for a hundred thousand dollars, or she sells it and pays off a hundred thousand, or she finances the hundred thousand. It would, it would make sense that she walk away on an asset that's worth several hundred thousand dollars for a hundred thousand. Actually, there's one whole building, though. With all due respect. She's not, but that, that's assuming that, that Linda would walk away. And you, I don't think you were here when I said, too, I think a good thing would be some key man insurance if she get hit by a car, that would, that our loan would be secured also. So, I, I, I just, I just don't like the amortization, that's just an opinion. I just like clean, I just like everything clean and done. You know, I, I, I'd like to see key man, I'd like to see it clean and done, so, toward here, whoever's here in ten years, and here's a long time, technology changes, that we're not sitting here with ninety thousand dollars due. And again. I couldn't own that, I couldn't own that, couldn't do that to the next, I, I, I wouldn't argue with you, I'll just say it doesn't, your logic doesn't make sense that that's due, the owner has an asset worth seven hundred thou, several hundred thousand dollars. I was liberal, go theater would make sense to me, because what are they doing with that building today? It's, it's, it's apples and oranges, but he's trying to sell it for three million dollars or something, right? It's, it, it's, it's a completely different adaptive use type situation, I, I understand that, I just like stuff.
It's just because of people on Zoom, let's make sure any questions or discussion happens with the microphone, so people can hear if they're, if they are watching on the, on the Zoom.
Didn't the bank, it was amortized over twenty years, the bank did the amortization, correct? They, they did the twenty-year amortization? That's how the bank set it up?
Right, what they were trying to do, they wanted is incorporate a payment that was viable based on the business plan. Based on the original amortization of the bank, which alone, they gave us a price of a monthly payment that economically viable. So, by incorporating balloon payment, that was a, we're able to basically have a viable monthly payment where by the ticket tax, we're able to pay that back based on a current revenue stream of theater, so, you know, it's economically viable, it's basically amortization together, that's why we set it up. Payment is something that the applicant could handle, and something the ticket tax could be able to basically pay back the village over the period of time, and then it ends at ten years of the loan, so that's, that's the general structure that we could negotiate.
And there's not, other than a cash purchase, there's not, as we've discussed, we've been in several meetings now, there's not a lot of options for financing from a bank, traditional bank. So, we've gone back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, looking for something creative and, and some other way to make this work so that the theater can remain open and we can, you know, move forward with the plan that we want to do and make it some dynamic, really exciting place. But the traditional route is not gonna work, that's, it's just not, I mean, we've gone to, they've gone to banks, I've gone to banks, Tim's gone to banks, and it, there's not a viable option for a traditional loan because of the COVID and everything else. So, after ten years, you know, whether it be refinanced, whether it be paid off, whatever it is, it's, it's, it's not a cross problem in ten years to be able to refinance that, it's not it's a, we don't know what's gonna happen in ten years, of course, nobody has a magic ball, but we just came out of a COVID, that's our issue right now, and so we need to figure something out because of the COVID.
Thank you. I'll come, again, we will go around again, trustee Pearson.
Jim, I have a question for you. How would this loan impact any of our capital projects?
I don't think it's gonna have much of an impact, based on creating a new revenue stream of the ticket tax. It, it almost becomes kind of a pass-through, if the ticket tax could cover the debt service. It, it really doesn't impact, and I did ask this question of our financial advisor, because I originally thought it may affect our debt limit, but based on a new revenue stream, it will not affect, like, let's say we got a new plate issuing bonds later, or going towards that, it should not have an impact.
But what if the ticket tax doesn't do the job? We hope it will.
Yeah, yeah. The, I want Linda would still have a payment due to us. We're not, we're not, her payment isn't limited by how much taxes are collected.
Right, no, my question is, what happens if we default? What happens if she can't make, make the payment?
Village will have to make the payment regardless.
Okay.
The village will be on the hook for the payment.
Okay, and, and answers my question. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Ask myself, I know, trustee Bluthard.
One primary question right now. The way that I read this, is that this one, you would not be responsible for this loan, it would be on the business, correct, so it's not on you personally if you were to fail?
I'm sorry, are you talking about the loan?
Well, whatever, whatever.
Fake, yes.
We're, we're being asked to act like a bank.
Correct.
So, I'm asking, is, is, is Monty responsible for this loan personally, or is it totally tied to the business and the bill? Meaning if the business cannot afford to make the loan, they're gonna come after us, but are, is, are they gonna be going after Ms. Monty also?
That would be an open question, it would be, it would be dependent on the terms of a potential loan agreement that we could draft. You know, if there is support for this loan between the village and the bank, then we would work with council to draft the agreement, which would provide security for the village for this, you know, basically a pass-through loan, so we could take a loan obviously with the State Bank of the Lake or whatever applicable bank, then we would turn around, do a loan agreement, it's a security, i.e. mortgage on, on the building itself with the applicant, and the exact, exact terms, we've not discussed that yet. The starting point is to see if there's any support for a, a potential financing of this loan to the applicant. Does that answer your question?
It does, but it makes, it's a more question. We're being asked potentially at the next meeting, in a matter of an hour or two, to potentially vote yes or no on this. Yet, we haven't even gotten to that point of this agreement. So, I think we're a little bit premature on bringing this to the board to say, listen, we have this proposal for you when we haven't even approached that subject, number one. And there's other questions I have regarding, are there other villages or communities that have any precedent to assist or to any type of loans like this that you can show us as examples of how they've worked, how they haven't worked?
Well, that's a good point, I mean, I understand your concerns, I guess from staff's perspective, we, we didn't want to work with council and go through an extensive process to do a formal loan agreement if there was, if this whole loan concept, private, actually, of those loan process was a non-starter. So, I guess, for my first, first, just as a starting point for discussion. With regards to crossing other villages, I, I'm not aware of With regards to crossing other villages, I, I'm not aware of some history whereby villages, I know direct examples where villages are actually owned theaters outright. You know, they actually own the theater outright and then they work with a vendor or, you know, there are examples of that in metro area. There's examples of not-for-profits, which, you know, the village they work with provides some grants, but with, with, with respect to its specific loan agreement, I'm not aware of any scenario similar to that in a, in the metro area, but I would refer to Mr. Downey. I don't know, Mr. Downey, do you have any knowledge of any, of, you know, okay, so. The applicants, do I use whatever these things, specifically templates like this? I, I think that most of them are either owned by the village per se or are not for profits. That's assuming, I'm talking about making theaters or theaters that are not operational and just for the record, as we know, there are very few downtown theaters left in the metro area, in, in villages and municipalities. There's only, only, I think, one, I think left in Lake Ali. I think Lake Jovivo still has one, but unfortunately.
I understand. I just think that if we were to approve this as a village, we're setting a precedent that I know we don't have to hire as we move forward, but just that's something that I am not comfortable with, not just for a theater, but for any business where we're financing a personal, private purchase of a business from someone else. So that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Trustee Berman.
I, I don't have any questions.
Trustee Domeniac.
Just kind of tagging on to trustee Luther's comments, I'm reading the resolution which is in the packet for our next meeting. We're saying that we're directing attorney to prepare the loan agreement, which we would then have to approve. So we're not necessarily saying we're gonna actually. This is basically giving staff the ability to move forward on it, meaning that we're in concept and agreement. So I think that's what we have to make a decision about because if we say in concept we're in agreement, then we have a little bit more of an obligation to negotiate what all the components of that agreement is, but would we then be held to that three hundred fifty thousand dollar loan?
Now, obviously we would not proceed with the loan agreement until there's an agreement with the applicant that the board is comfortable with. So I guess what the board, what the staff's probably asking, what was what they do tonight is to authorize us to, you know, go ahead and start the work with the applicant and build counsel on a, a complete comprehensive loan agreement, which would be subject to a financing between the village and a local bank. Again, on a practical level, if the financing could be the village, in a local bank is a non-starter. Is logically, does that make sense to work with your counsel on a formal agreement? That, is that your question?
It does. And, and I think, I'm really having a hard time with this because I do agree with all the arguments for how important the theater is to the downtown. But I also am a hundred percent in agreement with the questions that staff is raising about viability of the theater over time. The precedent that we're setting, the amount of money that we potentially would be on the, on the, before. We're not a bank, you know, and what's to say then the next person that wants to sell their building doesn't come to us and say, we have this great opportunity and if you would take, make the loan, then I can, I can, I can, I can. A new person can come in and by some magical, not magical, I shouldn't say magical, some way, come up with a way to repay the loan. We don't know. We haven't seen any evidence as to, and I asked you this last time, if there's gonna be a personal guarantee, which I think tags on to.
Potentially. I mean, that's what we have to get to square one and then we're gonna do what he just said and then we're gonna explore all those options. But we have to get past square one to say, yes, let's explore this for, let's now.
And, and I understand that, but my question to you is, would you make a personal guarantee for the amount of loan? And when I asked you that last time, you said you'd have the building and I think to trust the basics point others. Really not wanting to start accumulating buildings. So.
Well, I mean, the one thing I, I'm just really struggling, I understand, I know it's very important to downtown, but we're not a bank. But what are, I haven't really heard anybody, I, there's a lot of questions, I understand, but nobody has brought up any solutions or ideas or, you know, what can we do here? We, we know traditional financing is not an option. So we know, we don't, we all want the theater to remain open. You know, we all want the best, it seems like the best of both worlds or all worlds, but what are the solutions here?
Well, and I guess, you know, you, you raised a good question, but I guess the answer to me is this is a private negotiation between you and Mr. Downey as to how to purchase the building and we're being pulled into a private negotiation and that's where I think.
Well, I mean, there's other private businesses that have gotten grants. I'm not asking for a grant. They've gotten large grants to, they're not essential businesses. I consider this maybe not an essential business, but it is a much more important thing to the downtown than some of the other businesses that's received large grants to bring their business. If they fail, people are, it's not gonna be as impactful as losing a theater.
Wow.
So that, you know, why, why, maybe it wasn't you that made the decision, but there are other businesses that receive large grants to, you know, bring the business here or build the business or whatever it is, but this is a loan that's gonna be paid back and it's, you know, to save a theater that's important to this community and it's important to the economic development of the downtown. It's important to bringing more people to this community that will spend more money in the restaurants and the stores and, you know, and since traditional financing is not an option and I don't have the cash sitting around to pay him, you know, other than a cash purchase, you know, anybody that's coming in is gonna wanna finance that, the purchase, but if they can't get a traditional bank loan because of the COVID, what happened to the business that had to be shut down for two years? Then what are the alternatives? You know, I'm looking for ideas, solutions. I understand you're in a position to ask a lot of questions, but, you know, help with the solutions, help, you know, with ideas.
Perhaps you could look for a partner that might have some investment money.
I'm in the process of doing that too, but again, that's, you know, this is an important business to the community and to the village as well. So that's why to ask the village seems like the right thing to do and the, and the appropriate thing to do.
It's all him, yeah.
Trustee Pierce, I'll let you go and then I have a few comments I wanted to make, so I will, I don't want to lose you, have you lose your train of thought, so go first.
Thank you, Mayor Gardner, Linda and the rest of the board. I, I wanna be perfectly honest here. I think we're spinning a wheel that we are probably wasting our time on spending because I, I don't know if the board, if I listen to the board, is very hip on presenting a loan to pay for the, 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 the theater to keep it in existence, if that's the only way it can be kept in existence. We're willing to work with you on ideas like the, the ticket tax and stuff like that to pay for it and liquor and whatever, special event licenses and stuff like that. But, and I don't wanna speak for the rest of the board and I, and I don't think I can at all, but I think the more we discuss this, the more we're probably going around in circles because you need this to keep in business, to keep the theater going and the village can't, in my opinion, provide the personal loan that you want for this. You want a solution, the, the only solution I can see is a private partner with the money or Mr. Downey fund the loan as a land contract or a business contract and you, you pay Mr. Downey back from a ticket tax. Other than that, I won't be able to support a loan for, for a business that, though as dear as we love it, has no guarantee of, of, of putting forward money. And if you bring up the other businesses, they were in a stronger position, a much stronger position to be successful and bring jobs and bring money and property taxes into the village. So that's all things we have to look at. So if you're looking for direction, if I wanna continue this discussion, I think at this point it needs to be put on hold. I don't know about the rest of the board.
Anyone else? Well, I'll comment. I'd like to hear from Zeta as well. I'd like to put her on the spot. But I did a lot of thinking about this over the last couple of months and a lot of thinking about it today and put a list of pros and cons of how I feel about this situation. Looking at worst case scenario, which to me is the theater closing and going away. The second worst case scenario is us going forward with this and this going into default and us owning the building, which to me is not as bad as the worst case scenario. And as far as precedent goes, I can understand the concern, but I think this is unique to the village. I think one of the things I kept thinking about today is what I or we hope that the future of downtown is. And I hope that it's an entertainment and a destination for people to come for different events. And I think the theater and the business under some new, new guidance would bring more variety and more opportunities for entertainment to the village. I think this is a unique business. It has to be looked at case by case basis. There would be some very strong ramifications for default if I was to want to look at a, an agreement for this, including obviously securing the building. I would want to be able to buy out the building or the business for remainder of the loan, even if it was eighty eight thousand dollars at that point. I would wanna consider making the ticket tax permanent so that we can say to the residents, we have an additional revenue stream. I would also never, ever, ever support this project if it was money that was coming out of village funds that can be used for operations or capital improvements. I don't believe that's the case anymore. And I don't believe, and I wanna ask Zeta, I believe this has little, if any, impact on the village's borrowing capacity. So I want to hear from her on that. And again, I think my goal is to bring in food traffic and the amount of people, I don't know, Tim, how many people go to the theater per year? Maybe you know that number, how many tickets you sell, but if you sell fifty thousand tickets, that's fifty thousand more people that queue to downtown to spend money in restaurants, stores and other revenue sources. So I've gone back and forth in this, but the pros of making sure this stays viable, it doesn't go dark way outweighs the risk to me. And obviously, in any business and any government, there's gonna be a risk at times and you know, we're not spending taxpayer money, which was the key for me. So that being said, I wanna hear from Zeta about the risk, the impact of this borrowing.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, everyone. There is no risk on the limit because we will be borrowing Geo bonds. So that takes us out of the plate, but it will be looked at when we do the rating, when our rating, our credit rating, because it's a, a part of the home pretty much.
And how would that affect our rating, if you have any idea?
Not much because the dollar amount isn't a lot in comparison to what we would borrow for us. So.
Yeah, okay. But a change in rating would change all the other lending processes that we're dealing with.
That's correct.
All right. Thank you. All right. Trustees, yep, trustee makes it.
The one question I had is left off the P and L statement, it didn't go back, it didn't go back far enough. Is when the ticket deck, when ticket tax was in place, per year, how many people went to the theater? Cause then we get an avenue, is right now, best year on this, on this thing, net income is eleven thousand seven hundred forty four, seven, eleven thousand seven hundred seventy four dollars net income. So if you had the ticket tax, then what's the net income? We don't have, we don't have how many people go see that theater from, from prior years. So one dollar times how many people, we don't have that figure. And we don't have, you know, their ticket tax was how many years? So we don't have an average of that.
I don't know where you're getting eleven thousand from, I guess, first of all.
Well, this is right here on your profitability. So your profitability here, so I'm getting thirty eight thousand, I'm taking two, that December of nineteen, thirty eight thousand net income, right? And then I'm minusing the, the amount that would be paid on the loan, which would be twenty seven thousand twenty four dollars. That leaves a net income of eleven thousand seven hundred seventy four dollars minus the loan payment. I'm adding the loan payment. There's seven, twenty four, twenty seven thousand twenty four dollars. Then I'm taking your best year in your profit and loss statement. So that leaves a net income of eleven thousand dollars. We have no idea what your ticket tax brought in to bring that net income up. I get what the mayor said, but we don't know what that net income is.
Is, is, I, I don't, I'm not sure what you presented, but isn't the, the.
Your P, it's your P and L.
I know, but you need to, it's, it's, it's the twenty thousand ticket sales with, with, with the two dollar and one dollar ticket tax. So I don't, I don't have that number. I give you my historical financials, but as far as the ticket tax income, that's from Linda's pro forma.
But that was when you had the theater. When you had the theater, how much did you bring in in that ticket tax? How many people went to your, for your account?
Well, it's, it's apples and it's, you know, I had to look at the attendance, you know.
That's what I'm asking.
Right. Twenty five, thirty thousand, about twenty five, thirty thousand people.
That's the figure that's left off, cause if you get thirty thousand, that becomes forty one thousand.
Right, but that historical number is gonna be higher than Linda's pro forma, right?
Would it?
Yes. I'm, I'm telling you, my historical attendance is higher than Linda's pro forma attendance because we don't know.
But that gives us a baseline. I'm not disagreeing with you. It gives us a baseline. I'm not here to argue with you. It gives us a baseline. We don't have that baseline of what, how many people went to your, at your time as a ticket tax, and that's what I asked for.
I can provide the historical attendance and then you can apply her ticket tax. Cause I had a seventy five cent ticket tax. Right? So you had to look at attendance with her tax numbers versus tax numbers when it was in place.
This is getting more confusing.
So can I just ask a clarifying question? If, if we're asking for his historical, but COVID kind of turned the historical out.
No, 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 Mary. No, no, I'm taking, I'm taking two thousand. So eighteen was thirty two thousand.
Right.
Net income, we get thirty eight thousand. So all I did is took the best year we're seeing here, in nineteen, thirty eight thousand. The loan repayment would be per year twenty, twenty seven thousand, twenty four dollars repayment. So that gives a net income of eleven thousand seven hundred seventy four dollars. So I'm asking for what the ticket tax, cause you gotta make money to survive.
Right.
So that's always asked.
But, but the tax, whatever, is on top of the ticket price. So if it's five dollars now, that's based on five dollars, it'd be six dollars.
Yeah, I just looking for a baseline to figure it out. So I get some base, it's feasible. I can name a number, two forty thousand. I don't know.
I, I can, I can easily provide those numbers. I just know that when I'm sure.
Remember we have, I don't know why, why the going didn't have those numbers. So I'm sure we have those too. So, you know.
And I know when Linda did her pro forma, it was based on, you know, an estimate of, I don't know, seventy five percent or whatever, the historical attendance, because no one's sure what it's gonna be like coming out of COVID. So we get those numbers.
I get it. I think enough trustees have questions to push us to the next meeting because there's a lot of questions and answers with eleven thousand dollars. And I, and I know there's some trustees that are on the fence on it. And I, I would like to know that exact ticket tax for a baseline.
Trustee Peterson.
I'd like to know that number too.
Trustee Luther.
Couple additional questions either to staff or the attorney that would like to answer. In regard, regards to the ticket tax, is there, is there a way that that kind of tax can be passed, where that revenue goes to the village or the village pays this loan directly?
Yes, that, that, that's what this scenario kind of plays.
Well, it doesn't state that in there. It states that she'd be making a payment of the bank loan and you would be guaranteeing it. That would mean she'd be getting that revenue from the ticket tax, correct?
No, the ticket tax has to come to the village. It's a tax due to.
So where, where would the village, we collect that tax, where do we send that tax revenue to?
It would get, we would put it in a fund. We'd, Zeta, create a fund, book it to.
Well, eventually it has to go somewhere. So where would it eventually go? To her?
That would be, to the, to the bank. So based on that amorti, amortization schedule, if the tax wasn't sufficient to, to make the loan payment, we'd have to make a difference if it is sufficient. You know, and we have gotten, I guess it's at that level of detail, but, you know, we put it in a fund and maybe one month it, it was more than sufficient and we'd keep a, a balance there. You know, and maybe the next month, maybe less taxes may show up, and maybe then use that balance in following payment, but that's how I would envision it working. I, there may be other.
Part of some of the tax goes to the.
Right, goes to us. So if she has a bad month or two or three, we could be on the hook for this thing almost immediately.
Yes, you you would, we would be responsible, the village would be responsible to pay the thing.
I I agree with uh trustee Pierce. I I don't see this happening. So I don't want to, as far as I'm concerned, and I don't see a need to bring this to another meeting or anything else. I'm solid no on this. This is a horrible precedent. Be honest with you, I'm a little disappointed in the information I'm getting because this is this isn't a good move at this point in time. We have so many projects and so many things that this village needs to do. And to get involved in a private transaction at this dollar amount, here and there, this is not acceptable at this time.
Thank you, trustee Vernon.
Um, I'd like to wait to see the base number, trustee Masek and trustee Peterson, Stephen.
Thank you, trustee Domenia.
More information is welcome, but I just don't see us getting to where we want to go. Where anybody?
All right, so this is, as you know, on the board meeting for later on. And it appears that uh oh, we have a question.
Yeah, somebody on Zoom who's her hand raised. Do you?
We're not in, yeah, we're not in uh, we're not in comment period, but there is an opportunity for whoever's on Zoom to make public comment for the regular board meeting. So I guess I'm looking for directions to the board. Uh, obviously, we have this out for a vote potentially later.
You could table that in the main.
Okay, and so.
Or we can vote it out.
Well, at the, at the cow right now, we're done with the cow. It's already on the regular meeting, so I'll take it to the meeting either way at this point. I think the discussion's been had, and then we'll go and either vote on it or table it at the at the regular meeting.
Is it fair to do a poll of the board to see if there's any interest in using this any further?
Well, I don't think there were, I don't think we'd bring it back to the cow.
Well, bringing more information back than we wanted.
Oh, yes, so that that's, let's let's pull, pull forward, so. This is to bring it back to another county. This is no bearing on what happens at the regular board meeting. So trustee Pierce.
Um, I'll I'll stick by what I said earlier. I don't think, I think we're spinning wheels, so I would say not to bring it back.
Good, trustee Mason.
I would, I would like to get solid figures, and that's what the ticket tax brought in.
Trustee Peterson.
I'd like to see the um, what the ticket tax is bringing as well.
Trustee Luther. Good, um trustee Bourbon.
Bringing it back, uh and I'm going to grant certain trustee Mason and trustee Peterson.
Trustee Domeniac.
I would support bringing it back if there's evidence that there's been additional work done by the seller and the purchaser to find other sources of revenue such as a partner.
All right, so we will bring this back to a committee of the whole meeting based on what happens at the regular meeting and that agenda item. So um, we will discuss that item in the regular portion, and we will bring it back if necessary, okay? Um, thank you guys for the presentation. Next item is uh Michael Garion to present the discussion regarding the historic preservation guidelines, um which is a lengthy presentation um in writing, but Michael has condensed very very succinctly.
Yes, thank you. I'm not going to walk you through the actual preservation guidelines, but I just want to provide you a really quick summary. Um, the historic preservation commission, as you all know, has been very active in the past year. It's amazing how much progress it made there. In the process of completing our urban survey, what an urban survey is basically surveying all the historic structures, actually all the structures that are downtown. We're probably eighty five, ninety percent complete, um thank to the our our, the efforts of the H B C, and also the previous work of Granite Key Consultants back in two thousand and six. Um, one of the starting points, um we're 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 optimistic that with there's a real potential for some landmarking potentially this year. But the starting point for any type of landmark is you have to have general standards. Um, um, so what the H B C is working on is what we call our built preservation guidelines. These are basically based on secondary material standards. And these are only applicable, see as we speak right now, they're not applicable at all, we have no landmarks. These um guidelines will only be applicable for landmarks. So theoretically, if a landmark's approved, and somebody wanted to make changes to that landmark, we would use H B C and ultimately built board, would you use these preservation guidelines to evaluate those changes? So as we speak, they're not applicable, but we're confident they will be applicable in the future because I think there's a real high probability we'll have future landmarks. Not this year, next year, uh which I think from a preservation perspective is very exciting. So um, I I don't want to walk you through the actual extensive guidelines. They're they're fairly extensive. They address everything from window placement to porch designs, materials, to rough lines. They're very, very detailed, very specific. These are based on a number of of preservation guidelines um that other historic preservation commissions adopt, specifically communities like um Geneva, St. Charles, some of the communities in the Fox Valley. You know, I did not recreate the wheel. You can see these are very specific, very detailed. They have drawings, which I think are very useful um to to understand architectural terms. So I'll be more than happy to answer any questions um on on these preservation guidelines. Again, um approving these, we're not, it's not going to impact any property in Aniac as we speak. It's really just the the establishment obligation for a future landmark, and hopefully, one day we'll be using these guidelines uh looking at some historical landmarks. So that will be my stack.
Thank you, Mr. Garion. Any discussion or questions, trustee Pierce?
No, the only uh point I have is uh I hope we move this forward as quickly as possible. There are several buildings in the village that should have been landmarks already, and hopefully we could make them landmarks in the very near future.
Thank you, trustee Mason.
So we're going to move forward to create ordinance, right?
Yes, there are, so for, if there's support from the general, um when everybody's on the cow, this is an extensive document discussed. If there's general support for it, we'll bring back an ordinance at the next board meeting to approve this.
So this is, this is Ains, Ains's, Ains's.
Yes, Ainsy worked successfully on this issue.
She's she says she did a lot of work on this.
Uh trustee Peterson.
Michael, could you just tell me is it the entire village, or is it just Lake Street, Main Street, or is it Main Street?
The general, the survey, urban survey that we're completing generally covers most of downtown. So we don't, we have not identified any historical farmsteads, but generally the downtown, so all along Main Street, parts of Lake, parts of Orchard. All the, you know, Victoria, Harding Street, um Spafford, of the Windsor. Uh, even Park, there are some old homes. Again, not every old home's historic.
No.
But we surveyed every house in downtown and determined whether there's any potential significance.
Okay, Osmond.
From Osmond, yeah, all those.
All the old neighborhoods.
All the old neighborhoods. So we we probably surveyed at this point um well over a hundred fifty homes. And actually, the commission is doing that.
Okay.
But we have hired a new consultants. We're we're actually doing a lot of late work, taking pictures and doing a lot of late work.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Trustee Luther.
Now, for a a building to be considered for a landmark status, the building owner has to request it.
Yes, absolutely.
Building cannot impose this on a street or a house or.
No, the first thing during that application, which we did approve last, at the last H B C meeting. The first thing there has to be is a letter of confirmation affirmation from the owner that they agree to uh the proposed landmark application. So that's the starting point. We don't have owner's consent. There's no possibility that a property could be landmarked.
Okay, and and once landmarked, they can only make improvements or improve these the structure that you presented. Are there ways of requesting some variation, something to that?
There's a concept called certificate hardship. So if, in fact, there are some financial challenges or some other explanations why they cannot make the applicable changes, they have the right to come before the H B C, and ultimately, again, the built board is the final determining body. So you'll make that final determination to approve what it calls certificate hardship to vary from these guidelines. So yes, there is a process to vary from these guidelines through a certificate hardship. Um, but uh, this is kind of a foundation that the built board would use to evaluate any future changes to a landmark. More person.
All right, thank you, trustee Bourbon.
Uh, no questions.
Trustee Domeniac.
I don't have any question, but I do want to say that I know all of our commissions work hard, but the productivity out of this group really demonstrates their passion for their charter because they've done a phenomenal job over the past year working on all these guidelines. So I think it's terrific, and let's move forward on it.
All right, thank you. Unless there's any other discussion?
If it came back, someone had did all this, and they came, let's say, eight years down the road, sold the house, take the solar panels. Potentially, maybe it would get reviewed by the built board, potentially, yes.
All right, well, it's appears that there, unless there's objections, important, this to the regular board meeting for for a vote on this item. All right, next item on the regular business is a discussion regarding drive time call request for a liquor license. Uh, we have the advocate here with us this evening. Um, so if there's any questions, um I believe the application is in the packet, it's long, it's in there. I have it as long, page seventy eight, along with the try, so. If you want to start, you can do a brief presentation. I can go around to the board members and ask questions. Well, I'm prepared to present. Just want to make sure, you know, it's easy, it's not the easiest thing to do all night, so. Judge, trustee.
We'll find a way to make this.
Trustee Pierce, uh, do you have questions for the advocate?
Uh, not right now, your honor.
Thank you. Trustee Mason.
Just, just one question. You know, the line is you don't cheat it, cheating off just in the last thing.
I beg your pardon?
I think that is good.
All right, um, all right, so trustee Peterson.
Do you have food?
No.
Yeah, yeah, trustee Luther. Um, just a lighthearted question. I see in your spirit, you only have bourbon and whiskey. What about the card? Do you know? Yeah, I guess I, it was the menu you had on here in the great minutes. I didn't know how else you were sticking to that or if that was.
No, sorry, no, the man for bourbon is, is.
No, I'm all, I'm all.
All right, uh trustee Bourbon.
Uh, no questions.
Trustee Domeniac.
Um, you're asking for a tavern license. Not a restaurant license, correct? So we passed an ordinance that states, and I'm going to just read this for everybody for the record. From and after July first, twenty twenty, no license shall be created by the village board for any proposed business, which shall project sales of food and or beverages to be less than fifty percent of the gross sales of the business at the proposed site. Village Board shall have the right to consider all evidence seen necessary for any petition or seeking creation of a license to determine whether or not the proposed business model is one in which is reasonably calculated to generate sales of food and or beverages in excess of fifty percent described in subsection A. Village Board shall have a sole and unlimited discretion to determine whether the business plan submitted is reasonably calculated, etc. Um, so the reason that this was put in place, and I'll have to ask trustee Pearson, trustee Mason, who voted on this with me. Um, the reason for that was to make sure that we weren't creating licenses for taverns and for some of the smaller like betties that we have over at by the Walmart. So I guess my question is, if we have an ordinance in place that says that you have to have this percentage, and this gentleman is saying that there's not going to be any food, um how do we vote to give him a liquor license in violation of this ordinance?
I just posing the question, that maybe it needs to be investigated, doesn't get decided tonight.
Trustee Domeniac, what what code section or ordinance were you reading?
I'm reading required sales ratios four dash two B dash one five.
And we'll, and as I go around, we'll pull up the records too, so. Trustee Pierce, do you have any follow up? Will we look at the ordinance further?
Um, no, I remember the ordinance, and that's why I didn't have any questions. Um. I'm sure the attorney can fill us in more on whether or not we can vote i- in a form of a variance on this ordinance, but I I think the ordinance is pretty clear, so I ask no questions.
Four dash two B dash fifteen in the liquor code. Required sales ratios. And this was again because I wanted to stay away from taverns, just liquor. We wanted to make sure that anybody with liquor license was also selling food.
Right.
So I'm not sure if we can really make.
Sure, yeah, well, I'm going to have this pulled up right now on both uh computers here. Um, trustee Mason, will we let this up to any questions or comments?
No, it's just, it's just, you know, again, the path golf does, you know, they do it. That's a, you know, this is a smaller facility for for lessons. You know, just, just a short while ago, we're considering giving the theater a liquor license. The date is back there. So, I mean, this is golfing, 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 uh beer go back, uh golf was embedded. So, it's unfortunate, and I, and I get the ordinance, I get what I voted on. The attraction of someone wanting to go down there in the winter time and 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 swing a club. And and they, and after swinging a club, they, you know, people get thirsty. It's just, it's just a matter of fact.
Thank you, trustee Pierce.
I don't have any questions.
Trustee Luther. Yes, I would randomly pull up the actual ordinance itself.
There's no, uh, there's no exception that's been written into any ordinance, so any, any sort of grant of of a license would have to be consistent with that language.
Okay, so I guess my only question is then, if we wanted to allow this issue a license, do we have to do another step, maybe they're amending that?
You you have to amend your ordinance to create an exception.
Trustee Bourbon.
Uh, no questions.
Trustee Domeniac.
Thank you for answering my question.
All right, so I see, obviously, this is on, um, again, the regular business meeting. Um, and it appears there's probably some either further discussion or a benefit that needs to be taken to to take action on this. So um we probably would need to table this for the next cow meeting to come back with revision on that.
Yeah, we have to revise the ordinance.
We have to have a discussion on the ordinance, yeah, or an exception, or or craft an exception, in my understanding. All right. All right, so what that means is um two weeks from today.
You have another question? Is it within the realm of possibility, though, that if we don't want to throw the baby out in the bathwater by amending an ordinance that we put together for a specific reason? Could we grant a B Y O B? Would that help you with the guys and the women that want to come in?
I have.
You have B Y O B? So that doesn't work for you?
No.
Okay, but in the meantime, the people that are thirsty after swinging the club can bring your own beer and while we work through this.
So we'll work with staff and you in two weeks, be prepared. So we'll work with staff and you in two weeks, be prepared, since I have to, I mean, hopefully a shorter, um, beginning of the meeting for you, as well as a slide through the. That appears the direction we have to go with this, alright, alright, thank you for your time and presentation. Um, next item on the agenda is discussion regarding cigar pallets request for tobacco license. Is the, um, is the petitioner on the Zoom call?
I don't see him.
Alright. So, um.
We have somebody named Galaxy, I don't know if it's.
Somebody's on there regarding this matter, will you please, uh, is there a chat feature available?
They could raise your hand.
Raise your hand, yeah, please raise your hand. Alright, well, I'll pass it, and if nobody appears for the presentation, then we'll, I, um, we'll strike this from the agenda for the season. Alright, um, and so we'll go on to discuss regarding an agreement with the annual township for administration of senior services administrator kind.
Thank you, your honor. So, um, with the retirement of all the board pending here. And with the diminishing Dolly Spearing funds. And with the township willing to. Help provide senior service or provide senior service and maybe expand senior service. We have crafted a idea for your consideration. This will be noted in the budget conversation as well, but I think the timing is right. To transfer the senior services to the township. And there's a lot of reasons for this, there's a lot of history with the senior center, but the idea is not to in any way stop or. You, you know. Stop providing senior services to the community, which are very necessary, we realize that. Township is in a better position to provide senior services. Typically, that's the arrangement. You'll see a lot of township senior centers, you do see them at the village level, but probably not as much. But what this agreement basically, um, contemplates is a transfer of the responsibility for providing senior services to the township. Which they will do at the current center. As, as well as probably senior services that will occur at the township. The Dolly money, we estimate about a hundred thousand dollars is left. Would go with the seniors, so that money would be transferred to the township to be used for providing senior services. But at this time, and it's now that we're at the, you know, we're about to pass a budget. Into a new year where we know funding is, is questionable moving forward, and we have a person retiring, this, I think is the appropriate time. To transition senior services to the township, so that's really what this agreement is meant to do. A little bit more to it than that, there's more language in it, um, but essentially that, that's, that's the idea, is to allow the use of the center to provide the services. And there will, I will say there will probably be a, a short time period, say up to thirty days where the center will close for deep cleaning, painting. You, you know, giving it, you know, kind of a. Makeover, um, to kind of, you know, begin a new year on senior services for the community. There's a lot, we could talk about senior services, what's happened over the years, but I, I think we, I think keep this forward looking. But I would be happy to answer any questions, I know this kind of appeared later, we were working on this agreement and passing it amongst the attorneys. Until yesterday, so I know it hit your packet a little bit late. But this is, this is the time that we should. We should contemplate this and the board should, should decide what, what the future is going to be for senior services. The, the other option, we, we stay in the senior business, of course, that's going to mean that you're going to have to dedicate more funding. The Dolly Spearing money will, will run out and if it accounts for, let's say, about fifty percent of the services, you know. I, I guess the other side of this coin would be, we stay in this business, we're going to be spending about twice the amount of money on senior services as we had in the past, we have to hire new staff and. Go about it that way, the only other thing I'll say is that. You know, from my perspective, it's like, I think the township is a better fit for this in, in regard to the community. Township, not just village, oh, this, this center is used by people in the entire community. And I never thought it was, you know, Dolly, of course, helped, you know, finance and run this center, those funds. But to have the village taxpayers shoulder the burden of providing senior services to the entire community doesn't ever really seem quite fair to me. And that's why I would recommend we do, um, enter into this intergovernmental agreement to transition services.
Alright, thank you, um, discussion trustee Pierce.
Uh, I, I think it's long overdue, um. As, as the administrator says, I think this is an opportunity for us to move forward and. Review what senior services we're providing and what the township can provide. I do have concerns as, because, um, the administrator, administrator also touched upon the fact there are people using that building besides the seniors. Uh, I think some organizations store stuff in the basement and stuff, and I wonder how the township would handle those organizations. Or if they would have to move out, um, so I think we have to make sure we protect the organizations. But I think this is a, a perfect opportunity, and I think we should thank Dolly Spearing for all her, um, her help she's given over the years.
So if I could clarify, this is not an exclusive use of the building, uh, traveling closet, it's in the agreement, there's a provision that says this is exclusive of traveling closet. Village will still maintain ownership and maintenance responsibility for this building, you know, kind of our. We're, we're still going to, um, own and maintain it, we're gonna pay for the utilities and the custodial and the snowplowing and upkeep. Uh, we're just not going to be, you, you can almost consider the township as a vendor now, providing services in one of our facilities, we maintain ownership. Other groups use this as well, the village board uses this from time to time. Scouts, the other groups of the community, um, which will all still occur, um, and be, um, oversought by the village.
Thank you, trustee Mason.
If you had a crystal ball, everything moves over to the new facility, township center. Senior services would move there too, right? So then this, this building that would be. Renamed the community center, potentially something.
Yeah, if I had a different name. If I had a crystal ball, this, the village would. Re, probably repurpose this for expanded programming for youth or other things. You know, there, there's other uses that you could do in this building or dispose of it.
Thank you, trustee Peterson.
I think it's a, a long overdue as well. I like the idea of the township, um, sharing the cost, you know, and, and taking over senior services, um, coming from township funds. So, um, all of the people many are township representatives, taking care of the seniors, so it's a, it's a win-win, I think, for everyone, and I think it's a great idea.
Thank you, trustee Luther.
Just want to clarify, the use of the building by other organizations, they have to go to the township for permission, it still goes to the village?
They would still go, come to the village.
And then in regards to how this impacts the budget, other than a hundred thousand, it has to maintain the building, the merchant custodial, everything else. For senior services, will the township be coming back to us for any additional? Funds down the road, or is that?
I couldn't, you know, I, I couldn't predict whether they would make that request or not, but this agreement does not contemplate us participating in.
I mean, that's my question, because if, you know, they want to expand senior services and everything else, which is great, I'm all for senior services, but then. They come back to us and say, we need this to expand the services, then if we say, that's on you guys now, then it's we're the bad guys, is that what I'm saying?
I, I, I do, and I, I guess that, that's a possibility, they would come back and request, and the village board would say no, and, you know, that, that's a possibility.
And then there, there was some language in here about current activities that the village and senior services are performing. Is there any language in there, is the township continuing those for a given amount of time? Or could they take this over and eliminate everything the village is doing from day one? My, my thought being that if they were to do something like that, I don't think they would do that, but I'm just saying, then the presidents are.
There's a clause in there that speaks to this, where, you know, they are saying, we are going to, um, you know, provide these services, but I, I think they qualify it. With, they have the right to, to change if, if they wish, but they're, I, I will tell you their intent is to do. Roughly the same, if not more, and probably more senior services out of there, but. You know, in the event they would stop providing senior services, there's language in there about a breach. Or it may say a violation, I, I can't remember which we ended up with. But there would be, you know, a time period for cure, you know, provide the service, or, you know, there is some language that speaks to the arrangement where they would, if they were to stop or be. Deficient somehow on senior service.
And then just one last one, do we currently or have we obtained any grants or funding based on the village performing senior services? There's any revenue streams that we're not going to be able to obtain in the future from state or feds?
That's my knowledge.
That we would lose because we're no longer performing those services?
That's my knowledge, this, the senior services here survive solely on Dolly Spearing bequest and village general funds.
I think for. Trustee Bourbon?
I, we need to move forward on it, like, uh, Jim said, it's well overdue, um, and I feel that I'm confident in saying that the, uh. The township will do a good job at taking care of our seniors.
Trustee Dominion?
So what is the impact on the budget, because I know Dolly didn't cover all the costs. Is that, I mean.
It's about seventy-five thousand dollars.
Okay, so seventy-five thousand dollars, yeah. No, I, I agree, it's everybody uses it long overdue, and I send my thanks to township supervisor. For, for kicking this on, making it happen, Mr. Shaw, I see he should be thanked.
I'll pass that line and then I would request we put this on the agenda. For the next.
You volunteered for the title.
I'll get my wife.
Alright, yes, we'll move us to the next agenda, um, and that's the twenty seven, okay, thank you for all the work on that. Village, township, all of the, that's where we're at. Um, here we go, next is the budget capital discussion, just the Jim Zeta and probably a little bit more.
This is, yeah, this is a team effort, this, uh, this is an exciting night, um. You know, primary amongst my duties is to recommend a budget to you, so this is like my big night here. I'm not ready to recommend this budget, this is second draft. I will be in a position, though, I think we've made a lot of headway on this budget over the last month. And, um, I would like to recommend a budget to you to approve at the next meeting. But you deserve to see, um, what this budget is all about, so, um, I certainly didn't prepare everything. I had a, a team of people behind me, it's the staff that worked very hard on their budgets, and I'm very, very proud of the work they did. We've been, you know, we started out in a deficit, we weren't sure, you know. Where all the money to, to make a balanced budget is going to come from, we, we have since revised, got better revenue estimates. We have, we've made some cuts, there were, there were two, we sat with Hartman has and, and some of you, and there was two to three hundred thousand dollars in the original cuts.
That's our, just the trustees know, there is the summary and the budget in the package dollars, I think the presentation was added today, so.
Yeah, and if you, you can have an email of this if you like, um, you have it on those machines, I know, if you want paper copy, let me. So as we go through this, feel free to stop and ask questions. There's a lot to go through, we're gonna try to go through as quickly as possible, um. You know, what's included in this budget, we took all the capital, you know, we had a, a discussion about capital. And we blended in year one of that capital plan, that draft capital plan, so we, we are, this would activate all those projects that you saw in the capital plan. This budget also, um, is able to tolerate the incorporation of the salary study, which would, I think it was about a. Say that correctly, if I'm wrong, it was about a two hundred thousand dollar. A little over that, um, and that salary study, um, would have to be approved by the village board prior to approval of, of the budget. That's, that's how you, that's how I recommend that you do this, but the draft that you had before you shows that we could tolerate. You know, that, that adjustment to salaries and implementing that, those salary ranges you saw into this document. There's one item worth knowing that is not in here and will be a future discussion, and you may give me some feedback, I don't know if you'd like me to include it or not, but. Our policy on paid time off, um, we're, we're talking about an amendment of how much time paid time off you're allowed to carry in our, in our policy manual. And, um, if we were to make an adjustment there, we're likely to recommend. That, you know, employees be compensated for time off that they, that we take off the books. So right now the policy is you can carry twice your allotment, if you have two weeks of vacation, you can carry four into the next year. Okay, that's how it works, um, I, I think the recommendation is like, and say, you can maybe just only carry two into next year, so cut that amount in half of what you could carry. But I think it would only be fair to the employees to compensate them or pay them out for that PTO that would be taken off books. Or it'd be one time deal. That number, I, I believe is, Zeta, do you remember, it was like a two, also like a two hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, it's a two hundred.
Yeah, it was also a two hundred something thousand dollar number, um, which on the next draft, we could build that to the budget. But maybe you'll give me some feedback on that, um, we're not ready to present the manual to you, uh, in advance of the budget, but I just want to say there's a, there's a big ticket item out there that we, we may be wise to budget for. That would give you the ability to implement that policy. Okay. Uh, with that, um, I'm gonna bring Zeta up to talk about the funds, so you're gonna learn about where we're at currently, I'm just gonna highlight it a little bit for you. Where we're at in the current budget year, uh, both in revenues and expenses, and we're gonna look at the budget and some trends on revenues, what they're doing. We're gonna look at, um. Of course, some initiatives, some personals, some different things that are gonna be highlighted here, um, there's a lot of slides, but you don't go faster than you think, but. If you have questions, stop us, ask, if we don't know the answer, we don't, you know, there's a lot of numbers here, and if we don't know exactly what's in every number, forgive us, we'll get the answer for you, we'll write it down and get those, that information too. But again, this is, let's keep this conversational, um, the goal here is to get you comfortable with this, um. But I, I think, you know, my, my general message to you is, this is a good budget, we're real close. I think we have almost every major initiative that's been talked about included in here, um, and I think this is a pretty tight budget.
Thank you. Thank you, welcome to your second draft of the budget and my first village presentations, I'm not giving you the exact thing, you know, to see the slides. So I put this PowerPoint slides together, not to overwhelm anybody, but to take you through a journey of the village venue, use my budget, my first budget presentation. And, um, is an opportunity to show you, uh, as of April first, where we are year to date. I put a PowerPoint together to show you the things that I think sometimes get hidden in the budget, or they're not transparent, not intentional. Or things that I think you should be aware of, um, in your, in your decision to approve the budget, this is not just, uh, my decision, this is the staff, I want to thank. I wanna thank the staff and Jim for all the effort um they put together to make it more possible to bring this presentation to you tonight. So we'll start out this with um. So first slide that we're gonna go through is, I'm going to give you an update of Budget Twenty-two for the revenues year-to-date. This was compiled year-to-date as of April first. Okay, so in this slide, I'm giving you all the funds that exist in the Village of Aniak's chart of accounts. You have all these funds from the one hundred to the nine fifty-three. I I provided you the fund description, I've given you the budget that you approved last year, and the year-to-date number as of April first, where we are as of April first, or we were. And there's the difference, so we, you see the difference of the 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 budget minus the year-to-date giving you a number. If the number is negative, it means that you're below the budget. For the revenues, it's not good, but even so, we still got like a whole month of revenues to account for, and I saw some big numbers coming in. So even looking at this, I can tell you we're gonna have a good year. So the negative you're on there and the positive for the um for the revenues is that you're over, it means you you exceeded the amount of the budget. Next page, on the next page, I put the um the revenues together. I took out the fiduciary funds, because those funds are only presented to you because we manage them. And that is the SSA, it is the police pension. And for next year, I left the Dolly spearing for twenty-two, but next, um the budget for twenty-three, that won't be there. Here, this is a true picture of where we are year-to-date for operating revenues. And we're so far up to date, ninety-six percent as of April first for the revenues we anticipated to receive for this year. So you see that there are less funds because I took the, I took out the funds that are not operating funds. Next slide. I'm gonna give you an overview on the expenses for fiscal year twenty-two. And the same thing, I listed all the funds for you, you could see even the the fiduciary at the bottom is the police pension, the SSA. Those are not operating funds, and in the next slide, I took them back out and I backed them out so that you can see the difference. With expenses year-to-date, as of April first, we had seventy-nine percent. There's a lot of items that were the budget that we did not expect, we haven't expanded for twenty-two, and I don't anticipate. We are, I think this number is just going to change mainly of the three payrolls we'll have in April. In Budget Twenty-two, I wanna go through some major resources of revenues. Those come, those are the ones we really rely to operate, they're in the general fund. I'm giving you a history of property taxes, income taxes, state use taxes, the video gaming, the road bridge, franchise fee, and utility tax. We go from twenty nineteen all the way to what we budget for twenty-two, and I was really amazed to see how we did not see a negative impact during COVID, which is great. Um so I told the staff this morning, this is great that um we can see that the trend is still going up, even if from twenty to twenty-one. So if you go to the right, you see the change from between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, twenty and twenty twenty-one. And then the budget versus where we are year-to-date, we're doing great, look at the numbers all the way to the right. For property taxes, we've already collected ninety-nine percent. For income tax, and we still have another payment coming in, a hundred and sixteen percent. So those numbers all the way in the right tell you where we are as of April first, how much we collected percentage-wise. And you know, the target range for the year-end is a hundred, and some of them, those numbers are way above already, and we still anticipating some revenue sources to come in. Next slide, so when this budget, the next section of the budget is all totally Budget Twenty-three. The idea is for me to highlight budget impacts, which are the things that um the key things that I think you as a board should know that has impacted the budget, or there've been great changes from previous years to your current budget year. So I'll start off with the um I M R F, the I M R F decreased from six point zero nine to three point three six percent. The year before that, I saw the history, you were at ten per, at ten percent. So that's great, that means that your personnel cost decreased. The CPI for the tax levy is one point four percent for twenty twenty-one. The COLA increases this budget has is three percent. We also have a part-time position for human resources. Um we have two new police officers in the budget. We'll discuss transfers from one fund to another, those things exist in this budget. You have to use the fund balance. Fund balance is when you take and you don't, your revenues are under the expenses for the current budget, and you use surplus from the prior year, you're using it to make up the budget for the budget you're working on. So that's what that is when we, when we identify as the use of fund balance. In the budget, we also have lease payments for police vehicles. And there we've implemented the compensation studies, salary adjustment, the road program. We also have the purchase of the Semtech building in cash and designing it. We have a new department, communications. We did delete the Dolly spearing, the senior center. We have the offer funding that we hope to receive in the new budget coming in. And we do have another rebuild allowance for the coming budget year, one more payment to come. And this draft, this is the summary, and you were given this, this is where we truly are, even with the fiduciary funds. The general fund is at a positive after we made the cuts. When we came last time and presented this budget, we were at a significant deficit. The changes to that was due to the increase as you saw in the the taxes, we came in with more money. We cut the positions that we had in the budget. The depot parking, that has a fund balance. The motor fuel tax, it'll make up itself with that negative uh with funding that we get. The same thing for the two tips. The East Business District, that washes out because money's being transferred from that business district to the other business district. With capital, we don't have too much of the big capital amount we presented last time, but there is capital in there. The offer program, we're gonna have another payment coming up this year. The park infrastructure is just impact fees that come in, that's what we really do and pay out wherever we have to pay. And then the water sewer fund, and the bottom two, we can't see them, but they're really the fiduciary funds, and those don't really matter, they're not operating. Let's go to the next slide. There is your overall number, the total funds in the bottom, that's your overall of the surplus you have if you combined all the funds. Any questions on this side, this one? Okay.
Cause I am, if we implement the compensation study results, that's gonna have an impact on I M R F. Salaries are low?
Yeah.
Minimal?
Yeah, yeah.
The rate is very low.
And then my other question is, um how do you factor in the state budget? Because my understanding is he's proposing cutting out the food tax for a year, he's doing something with the gas tax, is that something that wanna weave into this?
So you, uh, yeah, well, we get um, we get what's called the data population of the state that tells us what's the money's on some of these revenues, what's to project. So if I see a a change in that and becoming, yeah, cause you don't know what's gonna happen, right? But it it is my responsibility to bring it to the board, Jim, and say, uh, we need to start looking at this, the revenues are not coming in. See, and everything is up in the air, right? Well, the projections, um we're very conservative in projecting.
Thank you.
You're welcome. This slide, for, now we're gonna go, I'm gonna take you through all the funds, and this is the most important fund out of all of them, because the general fund is the, is the fund that we use to subsidize other funds or to make payment, make purchases that we want to. So here is, I broke down the revenues by the categories, we got non-departmental revenues. We have um administration, we have adjudication, we have finance, park, community development, police, and public works. So at the top of the chart, you see that this is a a history from twenty twenty to what we're projecting. And I gave you a trend on the right, showing you the trending of the different revenues and how they go throughout the year. The bottom part of the chart is the expenses. I itemized for you how that bottom total all the way to the right on the top is fifteen million. And at the bottom, fourteen, I itemized all the revenue categories, and I itemized all the expense categories. As you see where the arrows are, the top arrow on the right is four percent increase in revenues we are projecting, and just a three percent increase in expenses for twenty twenty-three. Any questions? Next. Um this slide here is an important slide because these are restricted revenues, and um so I listed them there, the the depot, the public safety, the employee-funded benefit, the drug seizure, Dolly spear, motor fuel. These are, these are revenues that are earmarked specifically, that are underlined under the category they're listed. So I wanted to separate them to show you the restricted and where we are and what the history is. This is the water sewer fund, this is a very healthy fund, it um is an enterprise fund, and an enterprise fund is supposed to subsidize itself through fees. So you have to generate enough revenues to cover the expenditures, and it does really well. Um in, and I give you history with the revenues, as you can see, there's a trend of the revenues going up, and we became a little conservative for twenty-three. We went down a decrease in change in budget, and then um on the bottom is the expenditures. Any questions?
It's included three percent increase.
Yes, on all the funds, yeah. And just for the record, the majority of the salaries of the village come from the general fund. Um I wanted to also give you an overview on the cash balances, since the um water sewer fund is different than the governmental funds, it's an enterprise fund. I wanted to show you where we've been since twenty eighteen in cash. And we do also have a reserve, the second line um gives you the reserve number. And the third line um gives you reserve, so, and at the very bottom, the investment C T, so they're pretty, they 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 well subsidized for the expenditures that they occur on an annual basis. So just wanted to give you a picture of the cash for the water sewer fund.
You can use the bottom, that bottom C T as a reserve.
Yeah. No, I wanna, okay, there's a fund reserve. Um, okay, the TIF, this is the TIF. And um I wanted to show you as well a history on the TIF, there's a decrease anticipating a slight decrease of the revenues and the expenses. Um is, and the bottom is the other TIF that we have. That was a a negative for the coming year. And we'll make it up as we collect as the taxes go up, so we're conservative on the projections of that as well. This is the, the east and central business district, again, a picture of, if you see here in this, I wanna highlight this, that we use, the use of fund balance here in the business district is nine hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and two thousand dollars. We're using it for the, for the bottom TIF, which is the central business district. And you see the transfer coming in for twenty-three of one point nine million.
Oh, sure, move something around. I just wanted to move it. Oh, there it goes. Nothing's working now. So, yeah.
We have it on the left.
Yeah.
What about the row?
It's not responding to anything now.
All right, I'm gonna make it.
Okay.
Got it?
Yeah.
This is the capital fund, the offer fund, and the parks construction fund. As you can see, we have, we have a transfer coming in, the top one is your capital fund. Then there's transfers that come in, is part of it comes from the utility tax, is created to subsidize the loans and capital in this fund. So you see the transfers on the second line of that fund saying transfers in. I wanted to show you the pattern in the use of the utility tax subsidizing the capital expenditures. The offer, we anticipate that we'll get another payment for Budget Twenty-two Thirty. And then the bottom, as I indicated, is just of impact fees we collect. The explanation right here is the use of fund balances, I explained. Um the use of fund balances, when you're um, you're showing a deficit and you're using revenues you collected that were surpluses in the prior year, you use it in your current budget to balance the budget. And there, I wanna show you that at the bottom, I listed that the general fund is transferring six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars to capital. The East Business District is doing nine hundred and two thousand to subsidize the Central Business District. The water sewer fund, we use the fund balance of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. At the bottom, we have a transfer that's coming out of the utility tax, and uh one point nine million out of the East Business District. So those are items, is is very typical to see this in communities where the TIF district or the TIF or the business district transfer to each other. But I wanna make sure that I'm transparent and show you, uh in case you have any questions. And then I know we're gonna have discussions about the capital plan and possibly using cash. So it's important for you to understand what's happening behind the scenes before you see the available fund balance. But yet behind the scenes, we're making transfers or using fund balance, and it's not transparent to you. So that's the purpose of this slide.
And I do, I do wanna just point out, these are all capital-driven, so on the capital plan, if we, if we moved ahead, as I've showed year one, this is the result of what happens in your different funds. So you have a hundred and sixty um sewer and water, you know, that that's gonna fund engineering, the engineering we have already started on sewer and water for Grim Road, okay? So all of these numbers are driven by the capital plan.
Just wanted to give you a picture here, this is a picture again of the fund balance in the general fund. Um the general fund is split into several categories on the financial statements. Uh let's start from the bottom in twenty eighteen, you see that that's the total ending fund balance uh the Village of Aniak had, but the fund balance is broken down. Other could be like, they're committed, they're signed, they're kind of restricted for something, you can't really spend them. The next line is the available cash you have of that total. And then the third line is the reserves that we maintain. So just wanted to give you a picture of where we at. So if you go across, you see that at twenty nineteen, your available funds have been increasing. The village has been doing great, and especially if you look at um twenty, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, there was an increase. And part of that is, my understanding is that budgets were cut during the pandemic, so, and you still did well with the revenues.
Let's go back.
As our budget grows. As our budget grows, should we be looking at increasing our reserves?
Yes.
Normally, I always ask about reserves, every year. So I see that, you know, we've been doing three point five, I'm not suggesting that we have to do that this year, but I think as our budget is continuing to grow, we should be anticipating a, either reserve.
Yeah, if we keep with a twenty-five percent, you know, of of operational. Yes, but some of the budget growth here is capital, so I I would make that reserve, maybe, and we could have maybe more policy discussion on reserves. Wouldn't necessarily want to reserve money for one-time expenditures, but for operational things that we know are gonna go up and up and up with inflation, yeah, definitely. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, the purpose of our, our reserve is, is to cover operations. It's not to cover incidental costs or one-time costs. And your reserve should increase because your expenses are obviously increasing every year. So if you're following what the minimum gas fee recommends, which is twenty-five percent, and your expenses are going up, obviously your reserve has to go up. So this is where we come in. Every department's gonna take time and present a budget to you so you can ask so many questions.
Good evening. I should only take about forty-five minutes. So just a couple of highlights for the police department um, that are kind of driving some of our larger increases this year. As you know, bulk of the costs for their operating budget comes out of personnel. Since August, I've tried to make the case to the board that we are lacking in the number of ops. We have to address the current community problems that we are experiencing. You can look at this as a, an increase in personnel, but really what I'm seeking to do is get us back to where we were pre-two thousand ten. At the time, uh, well before my time administrative, there were some decisions made and lose some positions to the attrition. Since that time, we've struggled to get them back. And I think we now have made the case that it's, it's not a question of what's, what's gonna happen if we don't. But I think we're seeing what's happening from the lack of resources in the police world right now. So I'm seeking to take us from twenty-nine authorized to thirty-one. That's gonna allow us to increase our patrol presence and also I'm trying to seek to increase our investigatory presence. Our investigations caseload, probably none of your surprise, is expanded. Types of crimes have become more complex. The legislative and protocol requirements to investigate many of those crimes is also prone to be more complex, which requires significantly more time, much more time for the detectives to invest. We reached a point now where we had to uh, kind of award a point system to some of the crimes that get investigated in the priority they receive. And I don't think that's the standard that we want to have for our department or our community. We'll enable fully invest every, every crime that comes in. Police are very effective that we have regardless of, you know, the points that we have to award. Uh, the other addition then, of course, is patrol. Uh, you see the bulk of the study and information coming to you as a board on the amount of, of time that they're spending allocated currently. Again, this month in the report, you see that we're running about twenty percent of unallocated time, which does not leave a whole lot of time for proactive members in, in the officer's day. The target rate is thirty-five percent, which is kind of the uh, the industry standard for what, what, what a lot of studies have indicated is, is that fine balance. So we're hoping that we are way, much closer to that if we can have these upons approved to new officers. Also, we're seeking to increase our training. Uh, everyone is aware, there's communications I shared, the implementation and the passage of the safety act legislation uh, by the state last year. Many of the mandates that they have passed relate to training. They have now entitled training of a police officer to certification. If we don't meet those training, those main training mandates, our officers lose their certification as officers until they make those mandates. And fortunately, as a state often does, they pass these mandates, but they do not allocate the funding necessary for us to meet them. You know, it's always been a position, we've always driven to have a very highly trained department. We continue to strive towards that. But now we're having a lot of things cast upon us. Uh, we did produce training budget from last year, so there was a slight reduction from forecast last year. You know, they, we're trying to find that sweet spot between what we need and what's, what's a hundred percent appropriate. And we're also trying to predict the cost of ammunition and other things that we need to do our training. You probably see the news ammunition crisis uh, soared. Uh, some of the calibers that we need to use to train people are also certified and doubled. Uh, in addition to the long wait, we're experiencing to try and source those type of things. Couple of really the only actual purchases that we're seeking to make that are outside the realm of the norm. Uh, the first is we're seeking some funds to update our squad room equipment. That's kind of our multi-purpose room. It's our work room, it's our warm room for our, for our personnel. The furniture that is in there now was purchased circa two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. And uh, it was a, it was a nice purchase at the time, but we didn't purchase furniture that was gonna last a generation. Um, it's get to the point now where the, some of the backs are falling off, the chairs, tabletops occasionally slide off and fall on the floor. Um, delaminating, that sort of thing. The workspace of thoughts, we spend a lot of their time in the building, writing, generating reports. And so it doubles as our community room. So we certainly want that to have a professional level. And as you know, but if an officer goes professional, they are professional. So that's important in there. The other dish is uh, seeking twenty thousand dollars for the installation of thermal printers into the squad cars. This is being generated from a consolidation that we're going to be bringing forward in the coming months. The county is moving towards a consolidated records management system. With that records management system comes the citation. With the citation custom changes, what the circuit clerks are gonna require us to do, what the courts are gonna require. They're moving to a fully electronic docket in coming years. We have an opportunity to move along with the county in this purchase. Purchase on a, a whole purchase through the county, which is gonna save us some funds. While the system isn't gonna necessarily be online until the following fiscal year. We can recognize and significant savings by making that purchase with the counties waiting until the last minute. But to be ahead of the curve, ahead of the trend right now, we actually have to be, but recognize the cost savings as a result. Thirdly, lastly, is we're seeking to continue on with our fleet replacement program to maintain the uh, squads in the condition that they're in. Work very hard to get a very nice, very adequate professional fleet. Over the years, we now had to uh, budget, scale back on the budget for, for some squad cars. Creative fleet deployment, we've maintained adequate use of those cars. However, we don't want to fall any further behind. So we just want to make sure that we're keeping up that fleet replacement programs that don't go back to the years. You know, that I remember I was covered with a rack of a hundred fifty, hundred sixty, hundred seventy thousand miles on a squad car, which, you know, I remember we had, we had a day where the, the hubcaps, the wheels would fall off the cars that were driving them. So we're just seeking not to get back. If anyone has any questions, I think you have to answer.
I got one. If that's your lead, don't mind.
I should know better. Well, here's my question. I don't know if it's for you or Zayn, but I get, you know, I go off with a lot of people, a lot of talent, a lot of winners. And if there's stuff that, uh, we lose people training because our, our salaries don't match other departments. So C S Os are going to Round Lake because they're getting paid nothing and they go make almost double the money in Round Lake than, than ours. They're controlled prisoners and I mean, they hold a lot of liability. They screw up, we're gonna get sued. They had that problem with Public Works years ago. And we did some, I mean, there's some guys, they go to Lake County and, and make fifteen bucks more now. That were here a long time. Um, we gotta fix that problem. We can't have these guys risk their lives. And anybody that doesn't support police doesn't make sense, especially what's going on. We all hear what's going on in Antioch right now. And we all should support police officers, try to figure a way to get these guys out so we don't train them and lose them.
So you'd be in favor of implementing the new salary ranges?
Yeah, but, but, yeah. So I don't know, I don't know this salary rate, but it's gotta be to, to, to the small guy. Or maybe give out, we go to chief, to the small guy and the big guy.
You know, that's what the salary study was meant to do, is to keep, keep us on pace with, you, you know, the changing compensations out there. We are aware of many places that
I don't know where that fits, I don't know where that fits in the budget that we just discussed.
It's, it's in there. If we implemented the salary study, you saw a few.
And my pet peeve at the parking lot over there, that's in there. There's no one there, right? You didn't cut that out. The fence.
Oh, the new parking lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that is included. We've been, we're about ninety-five percent out of engineering work. So it's about to be. It would be a secure, it has to go planning and zoning because we have to issue ourselves in that area instead of that fence.
But I, 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 I think it's, I think it's a duty to, 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 because there's a prob, you know, there's a problem on the other side. You go, you go, you go on the other side of the street over there. They train the paramedics and they go work for other departments and they don't stick around because they're not paid enough.
It, it's a problem in a lot of places. It's a prob, a problem, I think, that has affected us before. And I think it's a problem that's gonna affect us more going forward. But you can combat that by um, adjusting your salaries.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Who's, who's next, Jim?
Brandon. Good evening, members of the board. It's an honor to be here tonight to present to you. So what I'll do is I'll, I'll go over a few highlights of my, my part of the budget. Um, obviously, this is all, for the most part, the, the new part of the budget. Some of this is taken from other parts of economic development or the Parks Department previously, and it's, it's now under Communications. Um, probably the, the, the most visible parts of the budget are some of the local and regional paid advertising that I'm looking to do um, with some local radio stations, ninety-five Wilrock, Star One Oh Nine Point Five. It's okay? Okay. Um, then also, uh, with some of our paid advertising, we do uh, advertising with Valpak, which is shared mail. If you're not familiar, it's a boom and blow up that Rochester House uh, once, once a month. We get really, really good advertising rates in there. Right now, we're promoting some of the parks programming through that. Uh, so that's, that's a big component of um, my part of the budget. Uh, we complement our paid advertising with um, public donations. So you'll, you'll have seen uh, some of the success that we had with that Small Business Saturday this past year. Uh, we were able to get some media placement, unpaid media placement uh, for some of our businesses in the community uh, of local radio. Uh, other success with some of the paid advertising that we did was our winter line walk. We had a pretty significant attendance for that, uh, which was attributable to some of the paid advertising that we did. Um, I have a radio background and I'm not used to talking in front of people. I'm used to sitting in a room by myself, so forgive me. Um, so speaking of that, uh, one of the things that we're looking to do that's part of this budget uh, for this next year is partnering with ninety-five Wilrock uh, for their thirtieth anniversary. Kickoff of their thirtieth anniversary concert, summer concert tour will coincide with the kickoff of our summer concert uh, at the Band Shell, Thursday nights at the Band Shell. Uh, so this coming Friday, we plan to announce the band. Um, for the concert, it would be the band Royal Bliss would perform for free uh, for the public. It would cost us obviously money, but be free for the public uh, to perform. And that would be uh, on Thursday, uh, June night. So. I think, next slide? Next one? Is there a, a website? Yeah. Go to the next one. Go, keep going. There you go. So the other component, which, which is the reason it's, it's in the parks area. Uh, but the other component of what we're looking to do is put together an R F P uh, for a website primarily. Uh, the goal is to improve what the Parks Department has for their website. And what I would like to do is put together an R F P to look at, at the very least, improving what the Parks Department has. And also, at the same time, looking to see what it would cost to improve the village's website. If we can do it all at once for uh, an economy of scale type situation, I'd like to do that. At the very least, I'd like to improve what the Parks Department uses. That's pretty much what I have for you.
Jimmy, I think you're doing a great job getting the word out about Antioch. What metrics are you using to evaluate? Do you have a plan for how you're gonna measure the success of these?
Um, I'll give you, give you example of, you know, talking to the Parks Department when we do advertising. Um, the line walk was a good example in, in Jan.
January, February, eighteen?
Uh, in January, when we did that, there was a noticeable increase in ticket sales as soon as we started advertising at the radio. Uh, we went from three hundred tickets to, yeah, it sold out.
You track where those people are coming from? I think that would be interesting to see. Are you bringing more people from Antioch because they want to get out?
We did hear that, just because people would call and ask where we were. And then we, they have to set up a, a account and it's an out-of-town account.
It would be nice to see how many out-of-towners you're getting these efforts as well.
Yeah, you know, we, we had, we, I had looked at those metrics. Um, I, I, I didn't put together a report, but I agree that, you know, it's important to see. Um, I know what I saw. I could, I could probably tell you that brought in a significant amount of people come out of town. And ultimately, that's, especially with our paid advertising, we're looking at people from outside of Antioch to come here and spend money. Um, but so.
Then the only other question I have is that there's been discussion in the past, and I'm not sure where this falls. I can't remember all the detail of my ex-budget, but about doing a website that would be focused on the downtown. So is that part of this?
So the, the hub website is just about ready to be launched. Um, so that, I, I think that's what we're, yeah, so that, that is already paid for. And we're just gonna cross our Ts and dot our Is on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you. You go back behind your microphone.
Thank you. No questions, please. Well, for the, for Parks and Rec, um, are the seniors are coming out. But still having the building is giving us, will give us opportunity to reprogram, as you had seen, like um, youth programs. But right away, the days that the seniors aren't gonna be there, we are gonna put programming in there. We are increasing um, career approval, the fees at the pool that have not been done since the pool opened. But we're also, Dawn would like to expand the deck, concession deck. We need new awnings, so just getting some of those, those are some of the things that will hit it. The increases in revenue, um, swim lessons, diving lessons, um, she is going to teach uh, youth lifeguarding classes. So lots of new programs coming out of the pool. Camp cram fees have been, will be increased to five percent, which will help with the salaries, you know, that is the interest that has not been raised in seven years either. So that will help us stay even keel. And um, lastly, the hiring of our special events person, great ideas. Um, she's bringing with some of the things would be uh, another impact on our fee. Uh, we're gonna hire bands and floats to come. We're gonna pay for those things. Those, you know, for our Fourth of July parade. And that's just gonna be um, pickup trucks and, you know, cars. So something to make, you know, actual bands to come in and play, play music at our parades.
I wanna say politicians, but okay.
Willoughby, right. Um, and then parks. Our main thing is the biggest, well, it's, will come out of capital is we'd like to, our firm to do a parks master plan. Um, the parks have been neglected, the um, not they haven't been neglected, but it's just they're a large expense. Like just a small playground uh, apparatus can be almost three hundred thousand dollars. You know, and we just need to upgrade um, our parks, our facilities and our parks.
Really split apart. Did you like that name, don't you?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next. We need to start with a new house.
So most of my budget is maintenance, um, software, just the regular day-to-day uh, computer replacement. There are two items in there though that will be one-time fees. Uh, one is we would like to add on to, excuse me, the camera system at the Aquatics Center Williams Park. Because right now, we have a whole area that is not being um, recorded or monitored, and that would be the North Pavilion and along the fence line of the pool. So we would like to add on to that. And the other item is, which is unfortunately a little expensive because it's Microsoft. Uh, our servers are running twenty-twelve operating system. Operating systems are only good for ten years. Beyond that, it's not supported and there's no patching. So that would be the other item that I have in the budget that is a one-time expense. So with that, I would want to take the opportunity to let you know a little bit about the I T department itself. Um, I'm a staff of one. I have nine buildings that I go ahead and support, and that's all within this budget. I'm a staff of one. I have nine buildings that I go ahead and support, and that's all within this budget. And go on next slide. And so there is just the outline of what is all supported within those buildings of end-users, mobile devices, workstations. So that is what is all in my budget for replacement, maintenance.
You have some outside help?
I do. I, yes, yes, I do have an outside vendor that I do rely on at times when I go vacation and stuff, and they will be assisting with the server upgrades, just because one person can't do something like that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Dennis, your turn.
I will be going over items in my budget, but I also wanted to be some new trustees and refreshing some of the other trustees of the operations and our responsibilities and so forth, so. Okay, so our operations goals. On an average, our office deals roughly six million calls a month, mostly from residents or township residents, as they own. If you're not familiar with where the township limit is in the bill. So our focus, you know, is always trying to be proactive, efficient, and properly completing, you know, the task of the team, where they're, you know, helping that rest there, taking a complaint, moving on to what needs to be done. This year, we have several areas of, we'll be focusing on with asphalt patching between the roadway and park. We're looking to continue the concrete lifting program. It started a couple of years ago, where we have a contractor that comes in and completes uneven sidewalks or some of the sidewalks, along with our in-house removal that other work staff completes by removing completely and putting new, which we've done both very, very well on tact. The list that we basically keep in-house for whether a resident calls or they notice something, because it's more of an organized process. We currently own three hundred streetlights that we maintain in-house. All the rest are complex. Our jobs are both proactive and reactive, well, unfortunately, but we strive to continue to blend too, so it can be as efficient as possible. Continue the efforts in reducing infiltration or I and I in the sanitary, you may remember, we started studying. And then we implemented a structure model this year, completing a hard seven-point structure. So hopefully, we'll see that reuse from our sanitary system. We're looking to do another row program, slightly a little bit less than we've done with the past years, just to kind of help out with capital projects that we have to issue. Create an inventory plan of our last service lines and the replacement plan. We may be where that state is passed. New law basically, and they are, it's gonna be pushing the regulations to complete that. I think it's over like the next five years, so. We've already started it. We'll continue. It's probably a good thing to get all the wet services up. Look forward to doing touch truck event again. I, I was there, a very enjoyable event. And then maintain full sound of new department facility. So here, we'll go over some, basically, I call this our responsibilities. These are gonna give you some stats on what we're responsible to maintain and attend to. Fifty-seven point eight-four miles of roadway. That's enough roadway to get you down to Chicago from here with, with side wall on the side. Along most of these roadways are the forty-five quarter parkway trees that we've trimmed, we're able to lower for plant. Also, you'll see the many miles of pipe that, you know, sits below the ground at most. One thousand and thirty-one fire hydrants, which over the past few years, we successfully repainted those. But we still have vacant tunnels that will be implementing others, rebuilding them, if they unfortunately get hit by a car. There's twenty-one lift stations that we kind of, that are constantly working hard. You can see some of the gallons permanent that go to pump. Their large pumps, some of them are almost, is all immediately. And that's all twenty-four seven that we have to attend to in an emergency. It's fourteen parks that we maintain, most of them with amenities, including the mechanical, the pool certified pool operators, the chemical pumps, heating oven. There's a total of eighty vehicles and equipment that our staff does very good at, at keeping up with maintenance and any issues. Most of them are P W G vehicles. Again, they, the very, the two very important hard-working infrastructures that require twenty-four seven monitoring or attending to in an emergency is, and you can see is the water system and the wastewater treatment plant. Both will be large and most known to be owns of sanitary water each day. And then on our water infrastructure, we will be performing a evaluation of the distribution system. So that way, we can understand if some wells that we're having issues with, if we put in addition filtration or whatever's suggested at the existing well, or we install a new one, or we can adjust our operations to do without one or two wells. So this, this slide is just basically giving you an overview of our involvement outside of everything that I talked about out on the road and so forth, just with the whole village as a whole. Whether it be built all PV parks and so forth, our responsibilities working with others. All right, our home. I wanted to take this opportunity to really, I guess, show and emphasize the importance it is for me and my staff. It's, it's long overdue. The light blue building that you see with the two garage doors, that, I'm not sure when it was built, but back in the sixties and seventies, that was the facility. There was a shop, and then there is a room that was combined with it. That was their break room. In the early eighties, we received two used double-wide trailers that were added. There, that's the front, the light tannish with the brown trim. That's our current main office. It's our headquarters, where sales come in, residents, and staff every day. Over the past many years, we've done interior extra rehabs to many of these buildings. The main truck barn that you can see on the lower picture towards the back, still dirt floor and has waterman running through it, through the middle of it. We've had waterman breaks in it and get everything out and make the repair, and more than once. The facility is the same size since the early line piece, when staff and population was half of what we are now. There's at least five pieces of our equipment that doesn't even fit in the shop to be maintained, so no matter what the weather is, it has to be done outside. There's no area to properly wash anything, so sometimes, especially a stickler when it comes to like the snowplows and stuff, they're expensive. But if it's a dead winter, try and get the salt off them, we can't. We do our best, but that, that's another important aspect, to maintain our fleet, so we don't have to keep on investing money into it or return it over. Issues when walking through the building, you can, you can feel the floor flex. It's that worn, as you can see the build, the trailers are forty years old. During COVID, it was a struggle to have my staff there in a twelve-by-twenty area where they have lunch, punch in and punch out, and be separated, you know? Or even eat lunch. Many of them didn't sit down there, just because I tried to keep everybody six feet apart, so. Of course, we've learned differently on that. So air quality, the HVAC is flex tubing that is underneath the trailer. It's not your typical ductwork in the ceiling or in the walls, which is, is an issue many times. We have critters, animals, we've pulled cats out there, died under there. Get down there, it's a, it's a place out of the rain, and unfortunate, but yeah, we deal with it on a regular basis, so, you know, just wanted to bring that up. Yeah, that, yes, it's, it's, that's my next. The structures are not commercial. They're trailers that are for construction while a building is being built. There's poor insulation, there's no foundations, the security of it is extremely poor. One bathroom for sixteen to twenty staff members at one time. So. I don't mind having a lot, too much, but. And honestly, a large concern of mine is that the building is on the verge of being haunted. So just, I'll continue to be the squeaky wheel. I appreciate your kind.
Thank you, thank you.
It's obvious that you need a new home. I think we all know that. But even if we said today, okay, start digging, it's gonna be a while. What other options are there for you to explore between now and when you get a new building that could put you in a better environment? You know, you're talking, and you know me, I never know about trucks, but if you're having trouble washing trucks, can you go to the township? What about the school? Somebody else that has a garage where you could do some kind of an intergovernmental agreement and say, I need to bring my snowplow over to, to clean it. I mean, where does the township wash all their stuff? Where does the county? Are there other options? Is there a, a building somewhere that you could move your staff into? I realize you need to do maintenance over there, but I think my recommendation would be to start thinking about, is there a creative way to enhance the environment for the short term until you get your permanent home?
I think we've-
I'm not asking for an answer now.
I think we've been doing that. I've worked for the village for twenty-six years, and I know for the past twenty years, it's, you know, the Parks building, that was originally going to be our shop. So I, you know, remodeling the facility, I've been involved at least three times with it.
I'm not saying remodel what you have. I'm saying is there a location somewhere in the industrial park?
The township is in worse situation than us as far as storage and washing the schools. They don't, they don't have equipment like-
Well, like I said, I don't know much about-
I'll look into it.
But maybe there's a space in the industrial park that's, you know, a good ranch for you all. I don't know, just try to think of a way to come on, get you out of there.
It's, it's a great thought. We'll, we'll look into it, but nothing comes to mind, you know, unfortunately, townships and schools just don't have the kind of facilities that you would see in a modern public works facility.
But could you find a space for these guys to have lunch and for Dennis and Sherry to be in a safer, nicer environment, that you could use a rental space somewhere in town? I don't know.
Yeah, we can-
And we don't need to problem solve it tonight.
Yeah, we can look. Typically, we do get a loose authorization to go forward through a program before we approve the budget. So again, we, we would like to get out to bid, but to, but to do that, we certainly wouldn't be asking the board to award anything until the budget's approved. But it's basically Sequet Terrace, Hillside, Elima, Phillips Circle, Blackman Terrace, small section of Poplar, we're proposing to pave. And then those roads over in Tiffany Farms have not been paved yet that I know of. So we, we're proposing about a six-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar road program. We are anticipating really high bids with what's happening with control. So we're gonna hope for the best, but I think the sooner we get out with that. With that, Michael?
Excuse me, Jim, before, before he continues, since we're all gonna squeaky wheel and talk about what our concerns are, since you had the road program up there. Anita and McMillan are getting a lot of wear and tear and abuse, and I, I know we did Anita, it seems like in the very recent past. It may be recent to me, but a long time ago for others. But Anita's got a lot of problems, especially across from that industrial building, like where all the cars park on the side of the road. And then McMillan down by Ash, the Ash Company with all the pallets, that's getting a lot of wear and tear, and it's starting to sink down into the ground and holding water because of all the trucks on it. Do we have any handle on that, those issues with that section of road, because it's getting a lot of semis and stuff on it?
We're aware of the big Mick condition on McMillan and Anita. It is an FAU round, and we've recently submitted both of those roads to the council and mayors to see if they qualify, and they do qualify for STP funding. So I'd like to maintain them for a few more years with the hope that eighty percent of the cost of to reconstruct both of those would come through another funding source. We're trying to heavily utilize as many grants as we can out there, and Anita and McMillan certainly will qualify. We think they will score very well. We would fix some of the drainage, you know, the, the Ash situation is kind of a unique situation. The, the road should be constructed to withstand the trucks. Some of the problems you mentioned with the water are more due to destruction of the ditch line and the waters. Not being able to get to where it needs to go. We did see some pounding on the roadway. We'll need to do some maintenance there, and we're gonna have to work with the, the businesses to try to stay in their lanes, so to speak, so they don't have to destroy drainage infrastructure.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I'm gonna make an executive decision. Eight fifty-eight, we're gonna take a five-minute break, and then Michael presents. I believe Zeta, I don't want trustees to feel like if there are questions, they have to rush through them. So and then we'll continue. We will now take a break before the board meeting, let's keep the board meeting, so. It's not exactly nine o'clock, but nine oh five, we'll resume the meeting, so. Please adjourn till nine oh five.
Yeah, should we reach out?
Guys, all did great. You can all relax.
I wait until we're done.
So, no, you didn't.
Before we have a lock-in, come on.
Oh, please. Yes, he does.
What was his name in high school? Then he went to school with my sister. Alright. Alright, we will uh resume the meeting and uh we have Mr. Garian is going to present to Gary the uh Department of Community Development budgets.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, I just wanna walk walk the bill before through some of the accomplishments for the past year and some of the goals for the community development department. The first aspect is, I think, one of the things that has been quite remarkable is um the village facade program. The one one thing I've heard really compactly, not only throughout the community, but actually from people outside. Uh the community throughout the county, actually Chicago region is how much uh the progress that that downtowners made from a physical perspective. So obviously with Vegas facade, uh the Station Fifty-One facade, the Klein Building, which was previous to J.J. Blinker's building. Uh the approval of Antioch Cyclory facade, which should be starting soon. Uh this Mass Patrick Scarpelli facade, there's been a lot of changes over the past year with the facade program. So obviously, one of the major goals for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three uh is to continue that success. We've identified a strong amount of money, our budget is lining up for a continuation of the facade program for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Uh as relates to the housing market, the housing market continues to show positive trends, we've seen. The completion of the Deer Crest Townhome Project, uh which at least from a from a rental perspective, it had really. Actually phenomenal responses, uh there's a real demand for a luxury, high uh high price point rentals, which. Um start at twenty-two hundred bucks a month for a two-bedroom. Um regards to Clublands Development, we continue to see a start of Phase Three. Uh we'll see hopefully this as start of Phase Three, which is the newest neighborhood in the Clublands Development. As you know, Ryan Holmes has had a a pretty good traction, pretty good success out there. Um we're also talking to the developer about potentially a Phase Four. Uh so we we will, we continue to see the Clublases being our our major residential development, development, there's more available lots in Clublands than any other. Uh community, uh at least in Nor- Northern Lake County, so that um we we have a benefit of still having available lots. Uh in Antioch, not too many communities can say that. Um Clublands Clubhouse will be starting, construction will be starting this spring. Uh which I'm sure the community, the neighborhood is very excited about, it's been a long road for them, but uh as you all know. We'll be starting a new clubhouse, you approved it, it'll be a beautiful new clubhouse in that neighborhood. As it relates to new businesses, we also have a new franchise of Jersey Mikes. Little Bean Bookstore across the street should be opening up hopefully uh by the end of this month or sometime in May. Station Fifty-One, we anticipate opening sometime in May, uh and we have obviously a downtown better breakfast. Um we're also talking to some other businesses for our downtown, so we're excited about hopefully and uh. Uh welcoming some new businesses downtown in the next year. Uh we obviously approved the downtown purification project, we actually have a meeting tomorrow with Lakota. Uh we we're excited about the property, we continue to actually to work on the uh the actual community park. Uh we have actually a committee, we have a meeting tomorrow, or so we're actually working on a long-term construction plans with that park, so that'll be a major. New endeavor, uh we also, as you rec- rec- recall, we approved the top street concept. Downstroke downtown purification for Main Street um in our downtown alley concept, so we'll continue to work with Dakota. To uh explore potential revenue um ways to basically fund some of these downtown purification projects. Uh one of the things that we're proud of is, believe it or not, this this year that we approved over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a small business grant. Uh program, we had actually assisted sixteen sixteen small businesses helping them through COVID. Um all those businesses with one exception, unfortunately because of a death, uh did survive and they had made it quite through COVID, so we're proud of that. This we talked a little bit about the historic preservation commission, the commission is very active, they're in the process of completing the urban survey. Uh we, as you see, we approved this preservation guidelines tonight, uh so we'll continue to hopefully start some landmarking of this year. Uh we also approved the rental ordinance, we're actually in the process of implementation, we're working as software. So we anticipate sometime this spring or early summer, the downtown, uh I'm sorry, the rental program will be implemented. We're working with our building department on an inspection, fairly intensive inspection schedule for the rental ordinance, so that's something that uh was approved. And will be implementing uh in this new fiscal year. Um we also amended the form-based code. Um regards to some of our long-term planning efforts, we continue to work on the Boyd's site for development, as you know, we're working with a car dealer. On the Boyd's site, on the Jason Brock One Seventy-Three. One of the things we're excited about is Brown, we had a Brown LLC previously known as a marketplace property, eight eighty acres of property. We continue to work with developers, in fact, we have a meeting to speak with the developer uh on that proposed property. We continue to work on some long-term plans after after property, which we still see as potentially opportunities for future annexation. Uh Antioch Plaza, we're working with that owner, not only to physically improve that site, but I think long-term is for redevelopment opportunities. Um and we we've identified that as a great field, so we think there's some opportunities for redevelopment there. And also the Picard China property, we hope to work with the owner of that property for long-term um redevelopment. With regards to economic development, um you get a, actually we've been submitting a new economic development newsletter at the end of each month. So continue to get that throughout this new fiscal year. But again, ongoing projects, we're working with uh two commercial users, users of the prone commercial property in One Seventy-Three. That's located just west of Menards, uh again, that's already identified the brown property or marketplace property. We anticipate there'll be commercial development there hopefully this year, uh and also potentially mixed-use development on that property. Hortus Property, they uh we're excited that they finally have a broker, so we're working with Mr. Hortus and their commercial broker. We've already had expressed interest in the Hortus property, uh and we hope hopefully anticipate uh some development on that property. It's probably our best commercial corner, again, this is the northeast corner of One Seventy-Three uh and Deep Lake Road. And finally, uh Boyd and Boyd and property, not only are we working with a a new car dealer for that property, we anticipate. Uh maybe potentially some planning with the future improvements of the road. We think there are some opportunities for a business partner like industrial development. So that just summarizes some of what we've achieved uh this year, but more importantly, where our goals are. Um for uh this fiscal year, so with that, I'll conclude my summary.
Thank you, any uh questions? Okay, thank you.
Michael, I'm sorry, I missed, my mute was on. I do have a question for Michael, um. Well, two questions, one, how do you expect the upcoming recession or economic impact of all the rates? And gas prices and all that to affect our economic development? And number two, we hear lots of words like the Antioch Plaza redevelopment and uh stuff like that. Have, is it possible to send out a survey to all the trustees to kind of get an idea what they think should be the redevelopment goals? The updated current redevelopment goals on on properties throughout Antioch?
Well, with with respect to answer your first question, we do anticipate with the higher interest rates that that will clearly have some impact on the residential market. Uh will have an impact on the velocity of sales, there's, I I just think that based on past history, that obviously the housing market is very sensitive. Uh to interest rates, so I think, you know, uh we've had historically, historically low interest rates, even. Uh with the higher interest rates that we have now, from a historic perspective, they're still quite moderate. But nevertheless, I think it would be um it would be ruthless or not prudent to say there wouldn't be any impact. On housing velocity or housing sales. Uh we also think there is an opportunity that will be some increased rentals. Uh which may not be impacted by the sensitivity to interest rates. As it relates to the second question, I think that's actually an excellent suggestion, we, as you all know. Planning staff is also looking for the input of village board and all planning endeavors. Uh what the appropriate forum is, whether that's part of strategic planning, but we 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 clearly want your input. Um you know, um working with some of the new info opportunities in our downtown. Whether it's the Antioch Plaza or potentially redevelopment of the area north of a future apartment property. We have some very important infill projects in our downtown area, so we would love to hear the board's perspective, board's uh vision. For those areas, so the question is what the best forum is, whether that's part of a strategic plan or whether it be a separate column meeting. I think staff will be open for any suggestions from the village board, but uh that's an excellent point. Did that answer your questions?
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you. I believe Zeta.
Thank you, this is your last slide show. That's the last, that's the last. Um for the finance department, we don't ask for too many things, one of the things that um as I started working here, I saw that was a challenge. Is the software, you have a software that's very old, is very limited to um what we can do, how we can modify. What we can give you, we spend a lot of time preparing information, especially for us to have this PowerPoint, it's a lot of manual stuff. But we're using access that's very, that's obsolete. Um and we only have one user who can manipulate it, design it, I believe it worked really well at the time when it was designed. But it exited with my predecessor, right before she left, we started to have a lot of issues with it. She put it in a place enough for me to start using it for the budget, but as time has gone by, um the thing is really, this is the last time. That we'll ever use it, um can't do much with it, it's to the point I have to manually do most of the budget now and insert data in it. Cause you can no longer add accounts and make changes, so with that being said, we went to um we. We looked into proposals for a budget module. Um instead of going into a conversion of a full system. That is integrated with a budget module, which is great when you could afford that and you do that. Um I decided to go the cheaper route and get proposals and ClearGov came out at the top. Number one is the Village of Antioch already uses it for transparency on the website, so we get this bundle and a discount to use. Um the ClearGov, it'll eliminate um all the data entry and um. It it's gonna um work really well with how software, we give them the data and they pull it together and we get what we want. So I think right now is a fix for the coming years, and I think that there's other things as a finance director that are more important than me getting a system conversion. Right, um it'd be great to, but I think we could work with the software we can, but we desperately need this budget module. So that's on there, with staffing, it's just a continuation, you had a position in the finance department, which was at a higher level. Paid um higher than what we're paying for the staff that we recruited recently. Um you approve and I appreciate it, I think that it was an excellent idea, my predecessor already had the idea between some contracting. So just as a refresh, we hired somebody at less pay, so we used the budget for one person. And we were able to get many things, accomplish a lot of things, for example, a position that's lower paid. We contracted payroll, it's more reliable to contract payroll, or more, the laws change. Um they're accountable to make sure we're in compliance with all the regulations. We're doing um the bankrupts, which is something that's very time-consuming because of the software you have. It's a very tedious process to reconcile the bankrupts and we do once a year the uh the pre-audit, which is great, cause I don't have. And we do once a year the uh the pre-audit, which is great, cause I don't have that level of the person that we had. Uh so I I chose to take this route because it allow also for cross-training, I think the finance department is very vulnerable. Everybody does, that way each person does their job and only that person knows the job. I think cross-training is very important and needed for us. I recommend that we renew our contract with LaBac and Amane for many reasons. This is my first year with the Village of Antioch, is a time for me to learn, to assess, to move forward, to get to know all of you and the staff. And as as I'm going through that journey, is to present to you and and Jim um items that I think are needed in the department and so it's just a whole. So I think right now, I'm confident that LaBac and Amane, as they have done for years, done your audit, I've worked with them. I'm okay if I've asked that um you just uh renew the contract for now, and we revisit maybe our RFP in three years. So that said, I'm also added CPE, I I'm I'm a big supporter of educating, educating my staff, myself. Uh I take CPE very serious, I'm certified, I define a job because I, they wouldn't support CPE. I can't come and give you good information if I don't go out and get it and it's necessary, it's important to me. Um that I educate myself and that my staff has that opportunity, so that is a new item in the budget. So those are the only things that are in the finance department. And I think that concludes this entire process. So the question mark is, we'll open the questions, I'm open to the question, and I'm always available to questions, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
So what happens next? So um I I do know this budget has some adjustments to make, I think those are. From from what I've seen so far, you know, um fifty or sixty thousand dollars either way. Um so we're we're, we continue to refine it until the the night it gets approved, to get as accurate as possible. But it it's more important that you're comfortable with it. We presented a lot of material tonight as fast as we could, it's very important that you see all this stuff. Um because that sets the stage for, you know, the projects, the initiatives we're undertaking this year. I I'd very much like to move away from budgeting and planning into putting these projects into effect, you know, and doing the things we talked about here. But it all depends on how comfortable you are with what we've done with this budget. Um you certainly, and and it's a lot to digest. If anyone wants a paper copy of this, we'll give you one, you're gonna get an email of this presentation. You have the budget, um but right now, we're gonna make some final adjustments. We will move on the road program and Little Rock concert, that's kind of in motion, those things are gonna happen. Um so let's not decide to chop those things out, but um. I I'm very, very proud to work with people behind me, I I think we have a fabulous staff, we get a lot done for what we have available to us. Um and their staffs, um so I I I I'm feeling really good about this. Um but I need your feedback, um it doesn't have to happen tonight, so I know this is long. Please, look at some of this stuff, something, when you call me, let's get on the Zoom, what whatever we need to do. If there's any aspect of this you're not comfortable with, and you wanna talk through, or just want, wanna know, you know, what's happening with it, you know? Municipal financing's not easy, it's not intuitive, it's something we're gonna have to get used to, so I just wanna make myself available.
Thank you.
How do we address the compensation study? You wanna do that before we approve the budget, you wanna approve the budget and then have the discussion?
No, I I understand the question. So on the on the twenty-seventh, you're gonna meet again, and that compensation study uh will be on the agenda for uh either approval or not. Now, if you don't approve it, um then we have to take that out of out of this budget, so that would push the budget back into. So I I plan to present and recommend a budget to you that ha- it implements the salaries uh study. Now, and you can, it it, you know, I guess this would be a good time, if you don't feel, if the majority of you don't feel that that should happen, you know, let me know. We'll we'll, I'll present a budget, it's your budget, so I'll present a budget without.
Oh, for the um for maintenance or?
Let's talk about it.
And I have no problem uh on the Friday meeting dedicating an hour or so of that topic.
So basically what we did is, we took those ranges that you saw. And it it depending on how long, if if you were at below the minimum, you get moved up to the minimum. If it, but it it also has timing involved, so you know, somebody that's been here ten years, you know, would be, would have been moved up to midpoint. So there those are, you know, those adjustments have been incorporated into this budget, that's what we did last time, that's what we're recommending we do. But if the if the board wants to do something else, you're gonna have to let me know.
I thought we agreed on that, that uh when we talked about it, that that's what we were gonna do.
Well, I I don't think there was a discussion on how it gets implemented, I think it was, you know, here's the salary study. And you know, it was. I I don't know, we we didn't have much discussion, I had discussion, rather abruptly, um but, you know. You you'll have to give me some feedback on what you'd like me to do with it, but my intention was to implement it into this budget. Um whi- which I I think brings e- equity as to what we're paying.
And I'm not adjusting with any such imagination at this point that you don't do it, but the trigger for me is looking at the minutes from the last meeting, right? What are the next steps, and you said that you'd add for more discussion on it.
Trustee Pierce?
Um I unfortunately missed the last meeting, I really didn't want to, but I had to. Um I missed this discussion. I remember the last time we did a salary adjustment, and there were some surprise pers- I mean, some surprise percentages in some of the adjustments. I I would at least ask that we get, for each of the adjustments, that we get a percentage of how much that's gonna increase. That that specific salary, because last time we got surprised by several of them.
Okay, we can, we can provide that information.
Thank you. All right, I says if we put this on the next board agenda. Let's be moved to the uh regular agenda on the twenty-seventh, and I'll dedicate some time on the twenty-second discussing the salary study as well. Thank you. Any other business for the Cal? Matt, I entertain a motion adjourned, I'll move motion trustee, second trustee Peterson, roll call please.
Hi.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, zero no motion carries, meeting is adjourned at nine twenty. All right. Nine twenty-eight, yeah, let's call together the uh regular meeting of. Roll call please.
Present.
Yeah, here.
Trustee Peterson?
Present.
Trustee Luther?
Here.
Trustee Berman?
Here.
Trustee Dominia?
Here.
Eric Gardner?
Present. Um mayor report, there is none, uh any, I don't know if the individual who was on Zoom before is still there, but is anyone wishing to address the board at this point? Any citizens?
Nothing.
Thank you, uh we have five items on the consent agenda. Unless someone moves to remove one, I'd entertain a motion and a second.
So, second.
All right, motion trustee, um Dominiac, second trustee Peterson, roll call please.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Dominia?
Six voting yes, zero voting no motion carries. First item on the regular business agenda is consideration and approval to ratify the March twenty-fourth. Twenty twenty-two payment of accounts payable as prepared by staff, the amount of two hundred and sixty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-one cents.
Some.
Motion trustee Peterson, second, second trustee Luther, roll call please.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason? Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Six voting yes, zero no motion carries. Uh next item, consideration and approval of payment of accounts payable as prepared by staff, the amount of one hundred and seventy-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents. Motion, motion trustee Luther?
Second.
Second trustee Peterson, roll call please.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes.
Six voting yes, zero voting no motion carries, next item of the agenda is consideration and approval of a resolution to. Approve a facade grant request for four twenty-five Lake Street in the amount of twenty-nine thousand dollars, even resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-four.
Some.
Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee uh Mason, uh discussion, trustee Pierce.
No discussion, your honor.
Trustee Mason. I get no discussion. Trustee Peterson.
No discussion, your honor.
Trustee Luther. No discussion. Trustee Berman.
No discussion.
Trustee Dominiac.
Um I don't know anything to say other than I don't think this um meets the guideline. Can I? I know I'm.
Um, roll call please.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Dominia?
Nope.
Five voting yes, one voting no motion carries. Um next is consideration and approval of a resolution to finance the purchase of the Antioch Theater. By a private investor in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-five. I think they're entertaining, I have a motion to table, I have a second.
Do we have a date certain on that, April twenty-seventh meeting?
We're gonna move it to a date, sir.
Yes, that uh we all agreeable on the twenty-seventh. Sure, um so we have a motion from trustee uh Luther to um table this matter and move it to the uh meeting on the twenty-seventh. We have a second of that motion for trustee Peterson.
Second.
Roll call please.
Pierce?
No.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes.
Five voting yes, one voting no motion carries. Next item is a resolution, or sorry, excuse me, number ten, consideration and approval of a resolution accepting the lawn mowing. And maintenance of the village properties bid in the amount of two thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars per mowing cycle. A total of sixty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars for thirty cycles and authorizing the village administrator. To approve with the spinal law of maintenance and landscaping company, EBA HL Landscape, resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-six. Motion trustee Mason.
Second.
Second trustee Peterson, any discussion of this?
Yes, your honor. Um just a quick question, your honor. Um do we have plans with the lawn mowing crew to make sure they do the parks and stuff before the main holidays like? Labor Day and Fourth of July, so people aren't in lawn grass, or do we normally take care of that?
Yes, yeah, we try and organize it uh around uh certain events, holidays. Anything that's going to be going on in a particular park or piece of property, uh we try and have them either come in. Uh right before, depending on when uh the the event or holiday falls on.
And what happens if we have an extended growing period, is there, is there added cost onto this, or do we have a? Amount for extra mowings?
Uh in the contract there to maintain uh um the grass at no longer than four inches, so. If it does grow longer, they're due to come back and cut it again.
No, I'm talking about the growing period. Like, like it goes into October and November and stuff.
Uh this, this will take you into November, basically, this is from uh May to November, typically ends October thirty-first.
Thank you.
Dennis, uh one question for you too. Um are we able to specify the date of week?
Uh I I can request it.
Just thinking, yeah. Wednesday or later would be better for the parks and the all that, you know?
Yeah, typically, typically we'll uh try and work with them to do it uh like a Wednesday, depending on how many days. One-day operation or two days, or trying to have everything done for the weekend.
Sure.
Uh but I will uh I I will visit back with contractor.
Thank you, I'll have mayor love Thursday or Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, that's. All right, um any other discussion on the lawn mowing project? All right, roll call please.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes.
Six voting yes, zero voting no motion carries. Um next item, um I believe uh I entertain either a motion to the table or move, this is, there was no presentation on the cow. This is the um consideration and approval of ordinance granting one class D primary retailer and one class D. East cigarette retail tobacco license for Cigar Palace, ordinance number twenty-two dash oh four dash twenty.
Move to table?
I moved to table, um trustee Peterson, second by trustee Dominiac. Um roll call please.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes.
Six voting yes, zero voting no motion carries, next is item twelve, consideration and approval of an ordinance adding one more class E bar and tavern liquor license. For drive-time indoor golf LLC, located at four twenty east Illinois Route one seventy-three and prorating fees. Ordinance number twenty-two dash oh four dash twenty-one.
Move to table.
Motion trustee Dominiac.
Is it twenty-seventh?
I don't know.
Enable this for research.
Okay, all right.
All right, motion uh to table trustee Dominiac.
Second.
Second by trustee Peterson, roll call please.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes.
Six voting yes, zero voting no motion carries. Next is consideration and approval of ordinance adding one more class B limited service liquor license for Asian Astro Antioch. To be located at five oh eight Orchard Street, reflected change in corporate ownership and prorating fees, ordinance number twenty-one, I'm sorry, twenty-two dash oh four dash twenty-two.
Move to approve waiting second reading.
Motion trustee, motion trustee Dominiac, uh waiving the second reading, second by trustee Luther, any discussion? Roll call please.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes.
Six voting yes, zero voting no motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing the village administrator. Execute a contract with Laura Buck and Amen, uh located for the purpose of providing auditing. Services to the Village of Antioch, resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-seven. Motion trustee Luther.
Second.
Second trustee Berman, roll call, any discussion? Roll call please.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Dominia?
Six voting yes, zero voting no motion carries. Last item on the agenda is consideration and approval of an emergency ordinance. Ratifying the mayoral declaration of emergency relating to coronavirus, ordinance number twenty-two dash oh four dash twenty-three.
Move to approve waiting the second reading.
Motion trustee Dominiac waiving second reading, second trustee Peterson, roll call please.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes.
All right, um the minister to report, none, uh village clerk report.
I do have a report. Just to remind everyone that this group is scheduled for Thursday, April twenty.
Thank you, any trustee reports other than those that were received in writing?
I have one report.
Trustee Pierce?
I'd like to remind the board and have it put in the record, the letter that we received from the engineering of uh. That inspected the bridge in in Oakwood Knowles, that we have that in the the record. And that we also um have a, have it put on a cow for discussion.
Hey, I'm discussing, um well, I'd have to look back at the date, there's probably three meetings ago, presentation by um. Oakwood Knowles subdivision relating to the uh the dredging project and the road of culvert safety issue. And so he's asking that the report be checked or green go in the minutes with that meeting, and then we add to a a towel coming up, so. And I think that's a reasonable request.
Um I have a request, we have a parade on Saturday, so we could spit up Main Street before that, sweep it and clean it up. And then um I'd like to request, it's late, so I'm not gonna do it now, but I'd like to, when we, maybe when we have the strap plan meeting. Over the low-hand. go over the low-hanging fruit opportunities to unify downtown that are in that report that was given to the previous board campaign to make copies of this availability.
True.
We put that in the.
And I will, the meeting itself will consist largely of capital plan, downtown beautification plan, which that falls under, and I believe the compensation study, which all would take some discussion.
I'll, I'm worried to send this out. I'll send it to you so that everybody on the board is aware. This is a, a plan that was put together by the economic development task force for doing some simple things. While we're waiting for the big enchilada.
All right, and added to that, I would like a discussion at the meeting next week, a little bit about, so we just will box, which we discussed. All right. Any executive session? Yes. Okay. Just for references regarding. Attorney. As a personnel related? Personnel, the attorney. Do I, I have a request for executive session of seconds?
Got a motion, so going to second.
That's a motion.
Personnel?
Personnel, yes.
Second.
I have a, a motion by trustee Mason, a second by trustee Berman.
With no action to be taken.
No action to be taken after executive session.
Trustee Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes.
Six voting yes, zero voting no. Motion carries. We are going to executive session with no further business take place after executive session. Meetings adjourned at nine, eight, two, into executive session.